Good evening. Welcome to the February 3rd, 2022 meeting of the Southampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held via video conferencing pursuant to Chapter 1 of the laws of 2022. And until further notice, all of the board's meetings will be held remotely. So we ask the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. There are also options on the website for public comments and to pre-register to speak on public hearings. So please consider that for all future meetings. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only, please do not join the Zoom meeting and instead go to the town's website. If you wish to be heard during a meeting but did not pre-register, please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the meeting group from the dropdown on the left, and you will find the information required to join the Zoom meeting. I also want to welcome our newest board member who actually is going to be hopefully on shortly, Bob Macedonia, who was appointed by the town board at their last meeting. Welcome, Bob. With that, I'd ask that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will be starting this meeting with a public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Sutton will mute the speakers until it is their time to give testimony before the board. Please be patient. If you find that you are having difficulties accessing the hearings, please visit the town clerk's meeting portal and click on the instructions link. Also, there are a few public hearings that will not be heard tonight, meaning that they'll be adjourned. So please listen to hear when they will be rescheduled for. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. Board members who must recuse themselves from any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Unless otherwise stated at the end of each hearing, all of these applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until February 18th, 2022. Those comments can be addressed to the Board Secretary Candace and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall. With that, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting, meeting January 20th.
So moved.
Okay, let's see. Keep moving. Susan, you'll be a second?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Tuhill.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Chair of the time, it looks like Helen's.
Yeah.
Helen, do you both approve the minutes?
Hi.
Thank you. Chair of the time. All right, and with that, we will go on to adjournments.
Okay, item on the agenda is East Core Grill, 535 Building 8, 535 Metro Kyrie Square. I'll move to adjourn that to our 217 meeting.
Second. Mr. Tuhill.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Chair of the time.
Okay, then we have to go to item 11 on the agenda. Tyrone, 37 Station Road, West Hampton. I'm going to do these three together because I said they were presented all along. Production Holding LLC, 61 Station Road, West Hampton. And we're at Production Holding LLC, 57 and 61 Station Road, West Hampton. I will move that we adjourn those to our March 3rd meeting.
Second.
Excuse me, did you say that number again, Keith?
March 3, honey.
March, March 3.
March 3, okay.
Okay, Mr. Tuhill.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
I'm recused on those applications.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Chair of the time.
All right, now we're going to go to the decision calendar. 720 North Sea Road LLC, Alice Greenwald and Grant Werner and RCF Properties. I'll move to adjourn those for that to our March 17th meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye, opposed.
Okay, then we have Wayne Folds for Jolene. I'm going to move to reopen that to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Tuhill.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Chair of the time.
And now I'll move to close it for a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Sorry, just lost it for a second. 95 the Lit Road West LLC, 85 Eastway LLC, and Kenneth Seif and Nicole Seif. I'll move that we put that over, those determinations over to our March 7th, excuse me, February 17th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, and then we'll go to Edward Burke and Patricia Burke. I'll move to reopen first for written submissions.
Do we have a second?
Second. Bob was saying.
Mr. Tuhill.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonia. You just have to unmute yourself, Bob.
Hi.
Chair of the time, and welcome, Bob.
Thank you. It took me a little while to sign on. I apologize.
I figured, it's all good.
Okay. Next item is LPD 4 LLC.
Wait, wait.
Hold on, we have
Oh, sorry, motion to close, Burke, with a determination this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Okay, LPD 4 LLC. I'll move to reopen to accept written submissions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tuhill.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonia.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Chair of the time, reopen.
Now I'll move to close it with a determination later this evening.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Okay, Nice Lots Real Estate Holding Development Corp. and Scott Slatter, which is the one next, the next one. I'm going to move to adjourn those decisions to our February 17th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
All right, now we're going to, that's it for that. We'll go back to the beginning of the agenda.
Okay.
God willing.
Anthony, thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
Okay. The first item we have on the agenda this evening is William Owen and Neil Owen, 86 Straight Path in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Matt, 900-77-3-40. Applicant requesting leave to the following divisions of the town code for proposed accessory apartment and a non-conforming lot. 330-11.2F special standards for a lot width of 100 feet, plus or minus where a minimum of 105 feet is required. And 330-11.2G1 to allow the size of the accessory apartment to be 52.7% of the total floor area of the principal dwelling where a maximum of 35% is permitted. In addition, applicant requests a determination as to whether or not the proposed accessory building is a subordinate or incidental building pursuant to town code 330-5 definitions because of its size in proportion to the main dwelling and its use and any other relief matters necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Evening, Lisa. This is up to story, and if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Lisa Zaloga, 1375 North Sea Road, Southampton, New York.
And do you swear to, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Tell us about the application.
Sure. Just for the record, I have Mr. William Owen sitting here next to me in case you have any questions for him as well. So the application, can I share my screen with you guys?
Sure.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is a copy of the survey that was included in your packets. As, as we mentioned, the property is 24,695 square feet, where currently it's required to be 30,000 square feet in order to have an accessory structure. A little history on the property, it started out in, actually, H zoning 100 years ago. And that's like an industrial zone. And then it went to R40, and it is currently R60. So it doesn't appear that it ever actually met zoning. The earliest deed was from 1950, so it predated zoning. But there, there currently exists a one-story dwelling on the property, basically a ranch house, that meets the setbacks when you apply the 3/10ths, 4/10ths rule. And it actually benefits from a variance to allow it to be smaller than the minimum size house. So it was granted a variance to actually be the size that it is. At some point, the
What size is it?
What size is it? It's, if you look at, if you look at the habitable space, which is how you guys define the percentage of the, of the size of the house, it's 100, it's 804 square feet of habitable space, which doesn't include the bathroom and the hallways. And that's
Thank you. It's all I need.
Okay. Um, so, and, and the, the variance actually says that it, it was granted to be a thousand square foot footprint is what it actually, they gave it to them. Um, so there, so there currently also exists a one-story garage in the back of the property. That garage seems to have been built at some point without a permit. We, after Bill bought the property, we applied for a building permit to legalize it. It also meets all the setbacks, the existing garage meets all the setbacks for, I don't know what that is, for R40, which is, we have a single and separate back to R40, so we can use R40 zoning, which has a 20-foot side yard. So you can see that the, this closest point here of the existing garage is 21 feet, whereas the other ones are more than double the, the side yard, the required side yard setback.
Lisa, was it, was this part of a subdivision? Why are you entitled to R40 zoning?
Because we went back, we have the single and separate back to R40. No, it's, it's prior to zoning. It was a, a, the, a described parcel prior to zoning.
Okay, well, you should check with the building department because you don't get, you don't get subdivision zoning unless you're part of a subdivision.
Um, I thought I got non-conforming, non-conforming described property approved prior to 1957. Does that not get me back to?
That gives you the 3/10ths, 4/10ths, and, and things like that.
Okay, so 3/10ths, 4/10ths, but under 3/10ths, 4/10ths, the accessory setback then for this lot would actually be 10 feet.
Well, that's better for you.
It's better for me. So now I'm four times a step back. So basically, it's conforming. So, all right, so the variances that we're looking for, again, we have a piece of property that is under the 30,000 square feet. It's actually 82.3% of the, of the required size. So less than a 20% relief granted there. We also, again, our lot width is five feet shy of what would be, what would be needed. Now, Katie, I don't know, there, there's a question. It's five feet shy of a R40. I think it's a little, it's, I think, what, R60 actually has a requirement of 100 and, what is R60? R60 has a lot width requirement of 150. So I guess the relief might be a little larger there.
Yeah, we're going to need to clarify all this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I don't, they didn't mention it in the, in what the, what the building department sent to me, so I'm not 100% sure. So our, our other variances that we're looking for, again, the, the house was granted a variance to be smaller than required. And we're looking for 52.7% square foot. Um, let's see, you guys are up there. Again, it, I guess it seems kind of counterproductive to say that you would have to add on to the house in order to, to get a minimum size accessory apartment. It kind of seems counterproductive to the process. Um, just in terms of our, our plans, we have the two-car garage that currently exists. One of the things that's stated under the accessory apartment is that the, the front door cannot be seen from the street. The front door would be on the side of the building. And we would have the stair going up to the second floor with a kitchen, a living room, and a one-bedroom on the second floor. The, the elevations, you can see here, this would be what would be facing the street. However, you know, by the survey, it's really not visible from the street because it's behind the existing house. Um, what else? You can see the aerial photo here. And, you know, these lines are a little off because you can see where the actual property line really is here. But here we have the existing garage, the, the ranch house, and the neighboring houses. And then this, of course, is, is what's the hecky? Stahky's area where they were talking about trying to put condominiums. I'm not sure where that stands. And just for your information, the neighbors all around us, other than, than these two that are, are over here that have not received any variances, most of the neighbors have received variances for different things. And I included those in my application to you. And back to the survey. And finally, I wish I could get rid of this. Hold on, there we go. Um, and then I also included the application, a previous zoning board decision for Kenneth Scott Oliver, where he was granted an accessory apartment of 85.5% square foot of the total floor area of the main dwelling. And just to note that that property was actually, you know, 2,000 square feet smaller than the property that, that we're looking for as well. Um, you know, Bill Owen has been in the town of Southampton for many, many years. He's owned a business here. He's basically had a business here for 50 years and lived here for 61 years. And he's, he's looking to retire and, and create something where he can live in this and rent, rent out this to create an affordable housing for, for the village. So it would kind of be a win-win. I, hopefully, none of the neighbors have any objections. And if you have any questions, oh, the driveways, both these driveways currently exist. And we would like to, to maintain them. It would make, it would make it useful to keep them separate, and they already exist.
Okay, so, um, thank you for all the information. The first thing, I just wanted to ask, the, the existing detached garage that where the proposed accessory apartment is going to be, you mentioned that, that you applied for a, a, an approval for it, but I presume it hasn't been, hasn't been obtained? Or did you get?
I, I have a, yeah, no, I have a building permit for it. I have a building permit for work done, correct?
Okay, okay, all right, so that, that's good. Um, as far as the percentage goes, the, the, well, the lots, well, the lot size is what it is. So I mean, if lot width is 100, you know, 100 feet, and 105 feet is required, then, you know, I, I found a little bit confusing on the survey, like, to, to find out where that 100-foot measure. Maybe you can help me with that. But anyway, that's minimal relief unless that's been changed by the conversation we've just had about 3/10ths, 4/10ths, and the fact that it's, you know, not part of a subdivision. But in any case, you know, typically, when, when we get these kinds of applications for accessory apartments, they're going to be scrutinized, scrutinizing what's already there in terms of lot size, in terms of the size and location of the existing residence. So I, I don't think that's an issue to speaking for myself. As for the percentage, the 52.7% versus 35% in terms of the size of the accessory apartment, that is something we have, where we are, we grant relief for from time to time. It is a rather, you know, it's a
That's a small house, though. It's a small house.
That's right. That's right.
And, and the percent, I mean, the percentage may sound like it's a little high, but it, it's really 142 square feet difference that we're talking about, you know, it's, it's not a huge number.
I'm not worried about sounds. I think it's a good application. Hopefully, it provides affordable housing to someone in this, in Southampton. I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
Okay, well, I have to go over one other thing, which is, we have in this application, which I took a look at the, 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 the Scott or Scott decision, and didn't see it addressed about the, you know, the analysis of, of the accessory building being subordinate to the primary structure. Looking at it on, on the survey, it looks like it's, I don't know, 75% or so of the size of the primary structure. I just wanted to ask if you had the, the figure on that.
Okay, I'll show you that. One second. You asked me about the lot width. And you can see here, you've got 28.8 and 28.8 and
And then 42.4. Okay, there it is.
Total's 100 feet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, that's okay. And then, again, the, I had originally asked for, I, I thought it was a different number also. But I was instructed by the building department that what counts is, is the habitable
Habitable living space, yes.
So these, these spaces are, the, the majority of the existing house is habitable spaces other than this little section of hallway here and, and the bathroom and the stair to the basement. Whereas the building here is, is, you know, laundry, bathroom. This is, so this whole, really, this whole area doesn't really count.
Okay.
And the garage doesn't really count. So it's really this amount of square footage. And again, it does, the bathroom doesn't count. So from a percentage standpoint, it's 424 square feet
Yep.
of apartment.
Okay, which is a little over 50%, which is not unusual when we do these kinds of applications. Now, I was, you know, referring to just the concept overall of the principal versus the accessory, what the percentage is versus 35%, but it's a difference, you know. Um, we, we're also looking at this application having to do with the subordinate use versus the, the primary use. So
Yeah, and we need those numbers.
Which numbers?
The numbers as it relates to whether the structure is subordinate or incidental. You gave us the numbers for that, you know, showing that the accessory apartment is 52.7% the size of the house. Now we need the number as it relates to the entire garage structure versus the entire house.
Correct.
Okay, and is that just footprint or is that first and second floor?
First and second floor.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and just visually looking at it, I'm guessing it's something, something in the range of 75%, but that's just my visually looking at a survey. It could be more, it could be less. Less is better. But we need that number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I can tell you that the, the house, the footprint of the house, according to the survey here, is 1,030 square feet, 1,030.3. And again, the, um, you know, it, it benefits from the variance to actually be smaller. I guess my question to you is, are you looking for footprint? Because some of these walls are, you know, four feet high because of the way the, it's designed. Are you looking for a complete footprint or are you also looking for the area that's under the eaves? Do you follow what I'm asking? Because habitable space starts at seven feet.
I mean, you can check with the building department with that. We're, you know, we're looking for the, how big is the house versus how big is the garage and the accessory apartment?
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't know about the eaves. You can ask, you can check with the building department, but it's, you know, it's just the perception of it, you know, the perception of, you know, it, does it, does it look like it's accessory?
Okay.
Yeah.
It's funny because that was how I actually originally applied for it, and then they made me change it to the gross floor area one.
Well, we need them both. It's not that we need just one or the other. We need them both.
Okay.
Lisa, Lisa, it's Candace. What they're looking for is exterior wall to exterior wall and then top to bottom.
Okay.
That make sense?
Exterior wall to exterior wall, yep.
Yep, and then top to bottom for be, for each building respectively.
Okay.
Yeah. And Lisa, I just had one, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I, I just had one other follow-up question for you, which is, do we have any information as to how that detached garage went up way back when without permits?
I do not. I looked on the aerial photos and it looked to me like, you know, your aerial photos kind of skip a little bit. Um, I think I saw it, it showed up, it somewhere between 84 and 96. Somewhere in between that, those aerial photos, it arrived. But we didn't own it, and I have no idea when or how.
Yeah, yeah. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't have any way of finding out. So I only asked a question because you know what I say whenever this is built. We have too many of them that, that happen in the town, and we want to know, and we ask questions about the facts and circumstances. And if you have, don't have the information, you don't have the information, but
All I can say is it wasn't me.
Okay. It wasn't, it wasn't, yeah.
And based on my numbers that I had originally, um, I had that the, the existing house is 1,030.3 square feet. And the footprint of the whole building for the accessory building is 921 square feet, making it 89.4%.
Okay, that is a very high percentage. And it's a very high percentage. Okay. I don't know where other board members feel about that. Where we are. I mean, the fact that this is going to be an accessory apartment, it's going to be approved to be an accessory apartment. One can make the argument that the fact that it's being approved for accessory, an accessory apartment, you know, arguably can, you know, by definition, it's accessory to, to the primary structure.
Yeah, typically, if it's, if it's under, if it's under the size that it's supposed to be, this exceeds the 35% as well.
Oh, significantly exceeds 35%. More than, more than double. More than double.
Well, is that 35% what's supposed to be the gross floor area number, or is that 35% supposed to be the footprint?
The 35%, the 35% is in the town code that basically says your accessory apartment cannot exceed 35%. So it's presumed that if you don't exceed 35%, then you are an, you know, you're an accessory structure. Because this exceed, you know, because this exceeds the 35% you're asking for the variance for it, but it also triggers this, this analysis.
Yeah.
And then, so, but the garage, because it's attached to the garage, the garage counts against me in that number?
It counts against you in terms of the
Accessory structure.
The massive
Correct. And, and if this, that the garage were an attached garage, we wouldn't be dealing with the, the second analysis.
Right.
The determination as to whether, whether it's subordinate, but because it's a detached structure, yeah.
But the board has never, you know, I don't think you've ever seen a, a variant, you know, or maybe you've seen one or two allowing a dwelling to be so small too. So that makes it unusual.
Right, right.
It's tough. I mean, I think a lot of this variances are as a result of the house being so tiny. So I wouldn't want to punish the homeowner that they have such a tiny house. So I don't have, I don't have an issue with it. So I don't have, I don't have an issue with it.
Katie, do we know if this is controlled by R forty or R sixty?
It, it, it doesn't, I mean, that, that analysis is, it.
Well, it matters in terms of, and it matters in terms of the variance that we would grant.
No.
Five foot or fifty-five foot.
It doesn't. I mean, it, it doesn't because the, the variances that are being asked for are for the size of the accessory apartment, for the interpretation of whether or not it's, you know, accessory and for the, um, the lot width. Okay.
Apartment on a hundred wide lot as opposed to a hundred and five.
It's that, that has to do with the accessory apartment standards. It doesn't have to do with what's required. Because remember, the accessory apartment standards ask you to address all the existing non-conformities. This lot already exists with a non-conforming lot width. So it's, you know, it's seventy percent of what exists. Seventy percent of what's required versus what exists.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think if you look at the building inspector notes, Marge even wrote, you know, seventy percent of one fifty equals one oh five.
Okay.
Right. Speaking of the notes, I wanted to read that into the record, at least, so you had that information. I'm not sure if you already saw Marjorie's comments.
I did.
You did. Okay. Have you addressed them already?
I believe so.
Okay.
Well, what do you mean you believe so? Yes or no?
Well, what she asked me for was the, the information regarding the, the house, the existing and, and those things. So yes, I, as far as I'm concerned, I addressed them all. I haven't heard back that I didn't.
I understand.
I haven't heard back that she was unhappy with what I did.
Okay, but if you can just make sure, double check with Marjorie that there, that the, as what's on the screen right now, the survey shall be revised to a lot width at a front yard setback at sixty feet in order to conform compliance with town code three thirty eleven point two F. And that, that should be noted that the required front yard setback at the time the dwelling was constructed, nineteen seventy-eight, zoning district was R forty, and although not part of the application, the existing deck, outdoor shower and shed shall be legalized.
Correct. And we put it, I put in for, you know, a residential shed to legalize that. Um, and the, what's called a deck is actually a patio. So it, it really, it's, it's a patio on grade, so it's not actually, it's not actually wood frame structure, so it doesn't require that. And we will remove the outdoor shower, so.
Okay. Well, you may need to revise the survey then to indicate that outdoor showers be removed.
It's, it's in process.
Okay, okay, alright. Alright, so that was all I had. I'm not sure if are there any other questions of members of board or Katie or Anthony?
Nope.
Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Owen? This is a property located at eighty-six Straight Path in North Sea. If you are waiting to be heard on Zoom, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
Okay. Alright, Mike had the lead on this, so he's not here, so I will make a motion that we close the application of Owen except for written submissions. The deadline for written submissions will be February eighteenth at the business. And if we get the written submissions in, if any, by, by then, which there definitely will be, at least a revised survey, then I would, we'll have a decision ready at our March third meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tithel.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonia.
Hi.
Goodbye, bye. Thanks so much, Lisa. Have a good rest tonight.
Thank you. Have a good time.
You too. Bye.
Alright, item two on the agenda is Joseph and Maria Ricciardi. Twenty Bay Avenue, Illinois, South County tax map, nine hundred dash five dash three dash forty. Apple request for leave from town code three thirty dash eighty-four D pyramid height for a pyramid encroachment of one thousand and thirty-eight cubic feet. Original one hundred and thirty-four cubic feet and additional nine hundred and four cubic feet to legalize a second story that was added to an existing decat detached garage for storage only without the benefit of a building permit or a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Evening, Daphne.
Hi.
Does that swear you in? And also, I'm not sure whether your clients want to be sworn in as well.
Yes, they should be.
Okay, very good. We'll just do one at a time. Daphne, if you can state your name and address.
Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning, two twenty-five Montauk Highway, Mauritius, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Joe and Maria, if you can also state your names and addresses, please.
Maria and Joe.
Richardi.
Richardi, twenty Bay Avenue, Sag Harbor.
And do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. If you do not, tell us about the application.
Okay, is it all right if I share my screen?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, here's a copy of the survey. So the subject property contains a one-story single-family residence with an enclosed front porch, an attached wood deck, and this detached two-car garage. The structure has benefited from the following certificates. A pre-existing CO that was issued in October of nineteen ninety-two for the dwelling with a masonry patio. A certificate of compliance from June thirtieth nineteen ninety-three for a kitchen addition to the dwelling, which I believe was this back portion here. And then there was a certificate of compliance issued back in November twenty-first nineteen eighty-eight. And that's A five six two two for the detached garage. So the property is also known as Lot Four and part of Lot Five of the G in this Hartley subdivision that was filed in September of nineteen thirty-one. Was originally zoned Residence D, ten thousand square feet, and was conforming to that zone until about nineteen eighty-three where it was upzoned to R forty. Uh, the property is comprised of ten thousand four hundred square feet and was held in single and separate ownership back to May twenty-second nineteen seventy-two. So at the present time, the owners are seeking to legalize a dormer addition that was done to this existing detached garage. I do have some photos, so let me see if I can switch that. Hold on a second. What do you do that? Can you see this?
No, we're still on the survey.
Okay, hold on one second. I'm gonna go again, this way. There we go. Can you see that now?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so these are some photos. So this is the, the Richardi's house. This is their neighbor's house. That's the garage in the background. Um, sorry. So this is a different angle. That's the garage itself, so you can see the dormers that they started construction. So, um, the garage itself is eight point three feet from the southern lot line and eight point nine feet from the eastern lot line. And the maximum height of the building at this pre-existing peak, well, the existing peak, I'm sorry, is seventeen feet, eight inches. Uh, and the dormers are not exceeding that height, as you can see. The storage area above the garage, which is the purpose of these dormers, has a height of six feet, five and a half inches. So it's enough for someone to stand. The space will not be conditioned, so it's strictly for storage. Uh, so they require variance from three thirty eighty-four D for pyramid in the amount of nine hundred and four cubic feet from this southern side for the new portions. This, this area here has an existing pyramid piercing of a hundred and thirty-four cubic feet from what was constructed that I guess no one caught when they issued the certificate of compliance back in nineteen eighty-eight. So we're seeking approval of both of those pyramid encroachments. This property also, you can see back here through the trees that there are wetlands. So a wetland permit was sought, an administrative wetland permit was sought and approved for this dormer addition as well as a deck on the house and an outdoor shower. It was approved in August of twenty twenty-one. We, let me see what else I have here. This is just some other photos of the dormers from the north side and the south side. So in relation to the neighbor's house, I just wanted to show you that. And I will stop sharing that, and I'm just gonna show you one more thing. Sorry. So this, zoom in. Is. The plan. So this is the pyramid drawing, so you can see this is the cutout of the existing encroachment of the building that was originally constructed with that permit from nineteen eighty-eight that received the certificate. So it's a hundred and thirty-four cubic feet. And then this is the new encroachment on that southern side. Uh, that's nine hundred and four cubic feet. So these are the plans that were submitted. I have been in touch with Marge Riley throughout all of this process. Uh, so we did review this. It was also noted that the garage was built not to R forty setbacks. Uh, I, in my discussions with Marge, it seems that this property, uh, it was upzoned to R forty, but I think right across the street from this property is still zoned R ten. So we kind of think what happened is when they got the permits back in the day that they potentially thought that this property was still R ten and they approved it as such. But we don't really know.
Right. Yeah, so way back when in nineteen eighty-eight, uh, the CO, the certificate of compliance issued for the garage, when it shouldn't have.
Right.
Basically. So, but you're trying to rectify that situation now, which I appreciate. But yeah, that's what this is as opposed to, you know, having built without, having been built without permits at all.
Yeah.
Wait.
As a CFC, yeah.
Clarify the record. Go ahead.
No, but the, the garage, doesn't the garage, the garage has a certificate of compliance, right?
It does, yes.
Yeah, it's the second story that was built without a permit, but the garage itself as one story is legal.
So originally, okay, so it's one story with it, with this certificate of compliance, and then they built, a second story was built without approvals?
Yes, but technically, like I said, Marjorie noted that it was not built to conforming R forty setbacks. Uh, and also it's exceeding lot coverage by three square feet, point one percent.
Okay. But when was the second floor added?
Uh, the second floor was added this summer.
And who did it?
The Richardi.
Okay, alright. So Joe and Maria, I have a few questions for you. Okay, so maybe you can tell us how it happened that the second floor was added to the garage without your having gotten permits from the town.
So first of all, there was a, there was a.
Peak.
Peak. There was a.
Like an attic.
Attic up there. So not like it was, not like there was a, no, no walking space up there. So there was something up there. It wasn't like we just built the floor and stuff. So we just raised the, the sides.
We raised the roof because we're gonna be moving out there from our house in Babylon full-time. And we have this whole house that we need more storage. And my husband's six-two and he couldn't stand in there, so that was the whole reason why we wanted to do it.
Okay, but who, who did the actual work? Did you do it yourselves or did you hire someone?
He, he did it with his friend who does construction.
Okay. And Joe, are you a licensed contractor in the town of San Diego?
I, I am not.
Okay, alright. Well, you know, I, I thank you for, you know, giving us some information about what, what transpired. It's really, you know, something that we see all too often, people, uh, building structures without approvals. I appreciate the fact that you're trying to legalize everything now, uh, but, um, you know, before any work was done, a permit should have been applied for, and had that happened, then, uh, you know, you know, under the circumstances, you would have been in a, in a better situation, but, but, but the good news is that what's being proposed here, you know, is not an enormous amount of pyramid relief. It's a modest amount of pyramid relief. So that's, that's the good news. We'll see whether any of the neighbors are, are here. But is there anything else you want to tell me about the, you know, the decision to, to build the second floor?
Like, like my wife said, we apologize without getting the permits, but thinking that it was just storage and we weren't, we're not wearing any plumbing, electricity. We got bad advice from some people we spoke to that we could just do it and didn't think. And I think we were trying to hide it. We would have probably tried to get it done in a day and we had the job going on for a couple of weeks. So it's not like we were trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes.
Well, and it's gonna, it's, it's there for anyone to see, so that is the case as well.
Yeah.
You know, I just want you to understand, if this would have been a large amount of pyramid relief, we might not be, you know, be inclined to grant it, and then you would be in a situation, you'd have to take it down. So I.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm not saying we're going there, but I just want you to understand that.
We understand.
Yeah.
And that's the risk people take when they build these stuff permits.
Yeah.
The other thing I want to mention, Daphne, I'm not sure whether in the package there is a, an estimate to, to make the, the garage off, basically, this would be the, removing the, the encroachments.
No, there's not. We can provide one if.
Okay, if you could, an estimate, and the reason that we're asking for that, Joe and Maria, it's not that, that we want to do that, but because we want to show the financial impact on you should, it, it, it turned out that we, that we're not granting the relief. So just to have that in the, in the record. It's, it's part of our test, not the full test. This is because it's an HSL structure by nature. It, it is, or at least the second story is, it is a self-created hardship. Uh, but that's only one part of our, the area variant standards. And so, you know, that's one consideration, but we have other considerations as well. Uh, my last question, and this is for you, Daphne, have you heard from any of the neighbors?
No, I have not.
Okay. Okay. We also got comments from the building department. Have you had a chance to see them?
Yes, yes. As I mentioned, I've been talking to Marge about this. We have.
Alright, so I just want to read them into the record, so we have, okay. So, so we have them in the, in the record. So this is from Marjorie Riley, building inspector. Although not part of this application, the outdoor shower and existing deck were built without the benefit of a building permit and shall be addressed with the building department. Two, it shall be noted that the existing one-story garage is currently in a non-conforming location and the rear yard coverage exceeds the allowable twenty percent. However, said garage benefits from certificate of compliance number eight zero five six two two. So what is the rear yard block coverage, uh, number? Do we have that?
Yes. It's like I said, it's only three square feet over, it's twenty point one percent. And that's the, the coverage of the garage in the rear yard. So it's, it's just the garage that's covering the rear yard, three square.
Okay. But, but you're gonna need relief for that.
Technically, yes.
Okay, alright, so that would be added to the relief that's being requested, which is a minimal amount of rear yard block coverage relief. Okay, um, that is what I have, is, are there any other questions, members of board? Katie, Anthony?
Yeah, Daphne, I see that you, you did include the administrative wetlands permit. Uh, has anything changed, you know, from that to when we got the application? You know, otherwise Marty will probably just send us a letter saying it's all consistent.
No, no, the, the wetlands are on an adjacent property and it's, this is over a hundred feet away, so there's no buffer or anything required. It's more of a formal.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions, members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Richardi? This is a property located at twenty Bay Avenue in Neuyak. If you're waiting to be heard on Zoom, this is the time to let us know by raising your hand.
I don't see the button to raise my hand, but I'd like to say.
Okay, alright. Frank, so I just have to swear you in unless you're gonna turn.
Absolutely, right.
Okay, if you can state your name and address.
Frank Quatella. The address is Nineteen Cedar Lane, Neuyak, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you can give us your comments.
Um, okay, so the comments, I'll just revert back to what the Richardi said about the garage being one story or two. The garage, my, my family used to own that property prior to them owning it. So the garage was in fact built with the, with the peak roof, the gable roof, with the windows. the garage was in fact built with the, with the peak roof, the gable roof with the windows in it and so on. Uh and I, I would say that I do agree with them that the house does have very, very limited storage. So the garage was built by my aunt uh as that accessory storage and and structure to park their vehicle. So uh that, that's first thing. And second thing is, but uh we own the property right behind them, which is that long strip which encompasses some of that wetland property as well. Um, and we spoke together as a family. We're, we're really not opposed a- and we don't see any problem with them doing that work, although they didn't get a permit, but we don't see any issue with it. We're not opposed. We like it. We 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 enjoy having them as neighbors. So that's, that's pretty much all we have to say.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Is there any, anyone else waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with this application?
I see no other hands.
Okay, if not, um Susan, this was yours.
Um, and Daphne, do you have time to get everything into it by February eighteenth?
Yeah, I think that uh all I really need to give you is the estimate. The survey should be fine and the plan.
Okay, so I then would like to move that we um close the public hearing and we um accept written subs until February eighteenth with a decision on March third.
Thank you.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Dunhill.
Aye.
Macedonia.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chairman Tai, uh thank you all for your comments this evening. Have a good rest of your night.
Thanks, everybody. Daphne, Frank, thank you.
Adam. Adam, before, before we go to the next application, um, what Candace has gotten back in touch with Lisa Zaloga. I wondered if we could um reopen number one, because I, we didn't get very much testimony on the two driveways.
Okay, okay, sure.
So it, Charles, if you see Lisa Zaloga, can you just let her back in?
Yep.
Um, you know, I just thought it'd be so much easier than trying to figure this out. So if if somebody can make the motion to reopen, number one.
Okay, I'll make the motion to reopen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, let me see, um, uh Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Dunhill.
Aye, just so that's William and Neil Owen, so 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 we know for the record.
Thank you, thank you. Chairman Tai, we are reopened. Hi, Lisa. Lisa, you just have to unmute yourself.
Hi, how are you?
Okay, alright, yes. Yeah, so we talked about the two driveways. Um so maybe, but a little bit, but maybe you can tell us more.
Can I share my screen again?
Sure.
And Adam, just so you know, uh you know, although we didn't advertise it for the two driveways, it is on the survey and Lisa put it in her letter. Um, so I'm not, I'm not sure why it wasn't included, but that's really why I wanted her to just talk about it.
Okay.
Um, so I, and I, I think I mentioned it the first time around. There, there currently exists two driveways. Um, there's one here in the front for, for the house. And then there was always, or at least of course when the garage got built, there was always the driveway to the back um to the existing garage that's there. Uh, so i- it, it would be helpful to be able to maintain both of them. I can um show you, you know, you can see here how uh this one kind of services the front here with the two spots. And this comes around behind it hides any cars that would be parked back there and it services the uh the garage in the back. I um, I had an area, I had a a screenshot of the front of the house and I, I closed it out, but um, it, it's a dirt driveway and, you know, it's, it's heavily screened on all sides. I, I don't think anybody really would notice um that it's there.
Okay, so you're asking for additional relief for two driveways. Um, one to the primary residence and the second to the proposed, what would be an accessory apartment if it's approved.
Correct. And and like I said, they're both already existing.
Right, right.
So no change there.
Okay, alright. So we have that on the record. That's, will be handled under any, any and all relief necessary. Any other questions, members of the board? Um, I'll just ask once again, is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Owen uh for a property located at eighty-six Street Path at North Sea? If, if you're waiting to be heard, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
No hands, okay. Um, so I will just go back to my same motion that I made before. Uh, uh which is to close uh the, this application, application of Owen. Uh, except for written subs, deadline for written subs is February eighteenth. And it will be on, if we get the, I believe, the information that we need, we will have it on for decision at our March third meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good day again.
Thanks, you too. Mr. Dunhill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Chairman Tai.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Item three on the agenda is forty Ocean View Drive LLC. Forty Ocean View Drive in Shinnecock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map, nine hundred dash two seventy one dash one dash forty-four. Applicant requests relief from town code three thirty dash eighty-four D pyramid height for a total pyramid encroachment of eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight cubic feet. Three hundred, three thousand six hundred and ninety-nine cubic feet on the east side of the property and five thousand eighty-nine cubic feet on the west side of the property for a proposed two-story dwelling and a non-conforming lot, any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction?
Katie Bruce, just have to swear again and state your name and address, please.
Bruce Anderson, Southern Environmental Consulting, Main Street, Prechamp.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you. If you can tell us about the application.
Sure. Uh, this applicant proposes demolish the existing dwelling, ban the existing cesspool serving the dwelling, construct a new two-story dwelling with patio, swimming pool, and install a new IA out system. The applicant has also extended public water um at his own expense to the site, enable this, enabling this property and four other properties to connect to public water. Subject parcel contains eleven thousand four hundred and ninety-four square feet or zero point four oh eight acres and is located in our fifteen zone. Subject parcel is also a waterfront parcel having a front edge on Shinnecock Bay. The lot line at Ocean View Drive is the rear lot line. The lot line along the mean high water of the bay is the front lot line and the remaining two lot lines are side lot lines. The property is improved with a one thousand nine hundred and twenty-six square foot existing residence with a hundred and twelve square foot roof entry and an existing wood decks which total four hundred and twenty-eight. Total coverage existing today uh equals two thousand four hundred and sixty-six square feet, which comprises twenty-one point five percent of the lot area. The uh parcel benefits from COC one six nine three three issued January seventeenth nineteen ninety-six for a one-story, single-family dwelling and deck. The subject parcels are pre-existing non-conforming lot with respect to lot area, but much more critically with respect to lot width. In the R fifteen zone, the board's probably aware of the minimum lot width is a hundred feet. Here at a lot with forty-four feet, we are less than one-half of the required lot width in the zone in which this parcel lies. In addition, the existing dwelling benefits from non-conforming setbacks, which include a twenty-one point nine foot setback from the rear lot line, which is Ocean View Drive, where fifty feet is required. Individual side yard setbacks of five point eight and eight point seven feet, where fifteen feet is the minimum. And total side yard at fourteen point five feet, where thirty-five feet is required. Now, if one were to apply four-tenths relief, total side yard would be calculated seventeen point six feet with an individual side yard calculated in seven point oh four feet. So no matter which measurement you take and how you want to look at it, the uh existing setbacks to this house relative to side lot line sides and rear lot lines are non-conforming. So if we can go to the aerial and I'd like to share my screen if I can.
Sure.
So this aerial depicts the existing house today. And um you'll see how tight it is to the side lot line on the east side. Little bit more space on the west side and how close it is to the uh the road. If we go to the second one, it'll show us what this house would look like. So we increased the side and rear lot lines and total side yard. We've also building a second floor addition, which causes um uh pyramid relief to be what would be needed for the first floor, but also increase the second floor. And we've taken that second floor addition and we've pushed it towards the uh uh rear of the, of the house, uh towards the road. And you'll see that it's behind the other two homes to the, to the east and west. So we would, we propose to demolish that existing house and we would construct a two thousand square foot residence with a patio and pool. Thus, the coverages for purposes zoning would calculate at seventeen point four percent, which is less than the twenty-one point five percent coverage that exists today. Also, the individual side yards setbacks would increase from five point eight feet and eight point seven feet to nine point seven feet off of both side yards. In other words, the house is centered on the lot. Finally, the rear yard setback would increase from twenty-one point nine feet to thirty-seven point seven feet. So
Bruce, Bruce, did you say the house is now, is just two thousand square feet?
That's correct. That's its footprint. And it's shown, it's depicted on the plans that are filed with this board.
Alright, so it's, but it's two-story with, i- is it four thousand square feet?
I'm sorry?
Was it four thousand square feet?
What is?
How big is the house?
The house occupies two thousand square feet.
Well, sorry.
The footprint.
The footprint of the house is two thousand square feet.
Right.
So is the second story also two thousand square feet?
No, it's, it occupy, the second story is, I'll give you an exact number. The second story is I have it here. The second floor measures twenty by fifty-five, so that makes it eleven hundred square feet.
Okay, so like basis thirty-one hundred uh squ- um
Total. First and second floors.
Okay.
Coverage, however, decreases to two thousand square feet over what exists today.
Okay, is this property in a, in a flood zone? Does it have to be raised or is it at ground level?
No, it's in an exome, so we're not um uh proposing to raise it at all. It's built at ground level.
Okay, well, well, that's important as far as I'm concerned, because the very large amounts of pyramid relief is something that I, I can recall that we've only granted in circumstances where houses have to be raised because of FEMA. I understand this is an unusual lot. Uh it's a very narrow lot, you know, as compared with zoning. But this is an enormous amount of pyramid relief.
May I continue?
Sure.
Certainly, certainly.
So uh, we are requesting the, the pyramid relief that stated, and the, the nature of the, the neighborhood is, is mixed in, in uh comprised of lots of varying sizes. The neighborhood was created by a subdivision known as the map of Cedar Shores, which was filed January thirtieth nineteen fifty-one. The original subdivision map depicted many undersized lots, but over time, property owners merged lots creating a mix of residential parcels that exist today. So when you look at this uh aerial survey in front of you, you will see that you have two lots side by side. This one and the one to the west, which have an essential lot width of forty-four feet. And then when you go further to the west, you'll see a lot of approximately uh ninety feet. And when you go west of that, you're gonna see a lot of approximately a hundred and ninety to two hundred feet. So there is sort of a mix there. And you can see that the houses are, are sort of fitted uh uh based upon the size of the lot. So this lot uh is particularly constrained. If we go to the next aerial photograph, you'll see that there's actually four lots that exhibit this condition. And these lots all essentially have that forty-four foot lot uh uh coverage, uh forty-four foot lot width. And if you go and you look to the left-hand side of your screen, you'll see the Buddha property and you'll see the Prius property. And what also those properties benefit from significant zoning relief. And um the, the we provided this board with various um determinations. Uh, there were five actually granted uh that are either very, very close to the side yard involving very significant pyramid relief, unfortunately. And some of these, they're not stated because they were uh given decisions early on in the, uh when the pyramid law was um adopted. And in those days, the decisions don't reflect the actual pyramid relief um granted. However, you have to, uh the, the pyramid for these lots would be the same or would probably be greater than the pyramid relief we're seeking here. So for example, in the case of the Buddha lot, uh in, in the case of the Buddha lot, uh uh the board granted relief for a two-story house having side yard setbacks of three point two five feet and six point three feet. These are fully full-height buildings that is evident in the field. So under any circumstances, that relief would certainly, although not stated in the thing, it would eclipse ours.
Well, I, I would like, I would like to see proof of that, Bruce. I would like to see, review the, the file from the nineteen eighty-nine ZBA application and get the number for us.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay.
Uh, the second one is the the second one is the Proio slot. And when you look at that, the, the Proio slot, the decision doesn't give us, but again, we have a side yard setback of three point seven feet on one side and ten point seven feet on the other side. And this also is a full two-story house. So we'll provide you with that as well. But it's not stated in the uh, uh, in the actual decisions.
That's fine. Just, just want to have the information, so.
And the remaining three that are granted contain a fairly significant pyramid relief. Uh, and these, uh, this condition arises out of folks who had houses that were constructed very close to side lot lines. And they wanted to go up. And in doing so, without changing the location of the house, they incurred significant pyramid relief. So we, we can investigate those for you as well.
Okay.
So our point is that we believe our proposed development, first of all, is, you know, the, the, the practical hardship should be very obvious to any board member. Simply stated, a lot that's forty-four feet wide is gonna require pyramid relief for anything built on that lot. Except for perhaps a TP, and we don't build TP. So we have to recognize that. And then the second thing we should be able to recognize is that the proposed development is actually consistent with the existing belt in the neighborhood. It's not being overdeveloped. We've actually, the, the coverage limitations are complied with and in fact reduced. And we've increased side yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks. So we believe that there should be branded because there would be no impact to the character of the neighborhood. Uh, the two-story dwellings are certainly common. We can total those up for you if you wish. Um, and that uh there are uh And that, uh, there are, uh, many examples where, where either you have existing pyramid conformities or that, uh, pyramid, uh, pyramid relief was granted due to proximity to side lot lines. The benefits sought by applicant cannot be achieved by any other method other than an area variance. This is because the lot in question has a lot with only 44 feet. That eliminated a lot with no dwelling to be built on the property that respects side lot lines setbacks and sky plane restrictions. I believe the variants are not.
Can I ask you something?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I'm a little confused because I, when I looked at the proposed residence, uh, drawings. First of all, it has five bedrooms.
Okay.
And not only does it have five bedrooms, but you don't enumerate it as five, you make it three. Now that, that, that's not right.
Wait a second. What, what, explain to me what, I'm not following you.
Well, there's the basement plan.
Right.
Yeah. That's got a bedroom on it. It's got two bedrooms in it.
Two.
And then in, uh, on the first floor, edge yourself on another bedroom, which they now call number two, which you really should be number three because there's two already in the basement. So we got three and, wait a minute. And we have two more on the second floor. So I mean, something, I mean, I'm not going to accept this, um, high number of encroachment. But I mean, that's just my personal view. So I, I'm looking at this house on a smaller, it's got a gym. It's got a den. It's got five bedrooms. Well, is this the kind of house that you wouldn't expect on, uh, and I'm not mentioning the swimming pool and all the other accoutrements that you have. Is this the kind of house that should be sitting on this kind of lot in this kind of space? I mean, for me, it, it doesn't feel, so I'm just letting you know. And whoever made these, um, drawings didn't make the right number. Maybe he thought somebody wasn't going to count and just go, oh, three bedrooms. Oh, that sounds okay. Well, that's not right.
Well, Bruce, what, Bruce, what are the ceiling heights?
Yeah, you don't have them down.
Well, the, I don't know. I, I'll get back to you on that. They are shown on the.
You're going to be coming back. So that's.
Overall height of this house is 24 foot, five inches worth, 32 feet.
I didn't, that wasn't my question, Bruce.
I wanted to point out, I wanted to point out that this house is actually seven feet below the height restriction in the town. It's not. So we've reduced coverage. We've increased setbacks.
You're looking for 8,000 plus cubic feet. I'm trying to find a way to get it down. I don't think this board's going to grant you 8,000 cubic feet plus.
Keith, Keith, it's 12,487.
What's, what's? It's better when it was advertised that.
It was advertised at 87, 88 cubic feet. Has it gone up, Bruce?
Yes, I'd like to complete my presentation.
Go ahead.
Okay.
So you don't have an answer for me?
Excuse me. What, you want to know?
How tall is each floor?
Ceiling heights.
Right.
Ceiling height, well, they're showing they, they have the roof. I, I want to get you the interior ceiling height, which is not depicted on the plan.
Start with the basement and do the first floor and the second floor, Bruce, of the ceiling heights, please.
The basement?
Yeah.
I don't have the basement on my plan.
You had the first floor?
Well, the first floor, the plate, the plate as depicted on the plan is at 52 feet, five inches. Okay.
The ceiling height, Bruce.
I'm trying to say, we're going to have to amend the plans to get you that number. The plans before you provide you with the plate elevations. That's what they do.
Okay. So we're going to need ceiling heights.
Right, right.
Continue your presentation. So we get.
The grand variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical environmental impacts of the neighborhood. The applicant has applied for and obtained letters of non-jurisdiction from DDC and a wetland permit from the town. Also, the project benefits from the upgraded septic system, system of the IA out system, which is something the town has been pushing. The board should also recognize that the design of the house actually minimizes pyramid relief. The proposed second floor, if you look at the plans, will be set back off the perimeter of the first floor by two and a half feet relative to the adjacent side lot lines. The basic exterior design is analogous to a wedding cake in which the second floor is significantly smaller than the first. And as I mentioned before, it's set back towards the road, which is an accommodation to the neighbors on either side. The first floor occupies 2,000 square feet, having a width of 25 feet and a length of 80 feet. The second floor measures 20 foot by 55 feet with a small six, three and a half by six and a half bump out towards the road. Also, the dwelling is centered on a lot and the height of the building is limited to 24.5, 24 foot, five inches where 32 feet is permitted. Finally, the board should take notice the house is setbacked from the water from the, uh, behind, and is essentially behind the two adjacent lots, uh, to the east and west, so that their views are unaffected by this development. So ultimately, the board must weigh the benefit to the applicant to the variance is granted against the detriment to public health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood. Here, the benefit of the applicant is an upgraded redevelopment of the residential parcel. And we can see, we believe there is no detriment to the public health or safety of a neighborhood resulting from the project as proposed. And therefore the variance should be branded. That is our position.
Okay. Well, Chris, I want you to, uh, have, we, we're going to have you come back. We're going to see what the neighbors have to say, but I want your client to be prepared, uh, to significantly change, revise this application. I think that's, if you, if you're hearing from members of our board, I think that's what we want, would like you to do, um, to consider. Yeah. Yeah. Significantly reduce pyramid relief. That's what we're looking for. So, okay. Any, uh, questions of Bruce?
No, but I agree with Helen. This is a very dense house for a very small lot.
And I agree with Helen too.
Thank you.
So that's, that's three. And I don't think Keith sounded very, very good.
Drawings redone and get your, your numbers of the bedrooms correct. I'll be looking for that.
And the ceiling heights.
As Bruce knows, this case has its own merits.
Right.
We do not set presidents from prior decisions. And he's well aware of that. He's known that for an extended period of time.
I love when he. He can, he can try to sell it. You remind us all the time, Keith. I love that.
He can sell it to us any way he wants.
Okay. Um, let me see. Um, is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard uh, this evening in connection with the application of 40 Ocean View Drive LLC? This is for property located at 40 Ocean View Drive in Schenochak Hills. If you're waiting to be heard on Zoom, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand. Good evening. You just have to unmute yourself. We can't hear you.
Okay, here we go.
Okay. All right. Good evening. I just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
I'm an attorney. My name.
Attorney.
Sylvia A. Galvary. Um, I, my office is, um, 17 Old Country Road, East Prague, New York, 11942. And I'm on, I'm here on behalf of, uh, two of the neighbors who live, um, at the property at 38, um, Fusion, um, um, Ocean View and they're here, Lillian and Chris. It's Severnick. I think they have to be sworn in if they wanted to be heard. I'd be very brief because the board basically said what we were going to say, but.
Okay, that, that's fine. But if you want me to swear them in, I'll, I'll swear them in.
Yes, let's, let's get sworn in.
Okay. We just need to be able to see both. Hello. So you just, uh, state your names and address, please.
I'm Lillian Severnick, 38 Ocean View Drive, Southampton, New York, 11968.
Okay. And sir?
Uh, Chris Severnick, 38 Ocean View Drive, uh, Southampton, New York, 11968.
Okay. And you, do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Nothing but the truth. We do, yes.
I do.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll see you. I'll let you, uh, keep going.
Listen, I want to be brief because basically the board did, um, uh, really, um, express my concerns. Um, the application, um, that is being proposed is asking for, um, um, a, a great amount of relief from the pyramid law. I believe that when the pyramid law was enacted and was made law, it wasn't made for cases such as this house. What they were, for the relief that they're requesting. The, the intent of the pyramid law was to allow people who were looking for a little of relief to be able to get that little relief. Um, and this, what the applicant is proposing here sounds like a tremendous project, never the intent, I believe, what the pyramid law was intended to or designed to grant. That's just number one briefly. And number two, I just want to also reiterate the fact that, um, I have my, my clients here who are very concerned. And the reason they're concerned is that these two lots are less than one quarter of an acre in this whole area. So these are the two smallest lots in this area, both of them. And the greatest relief he's requesting in the amount of 5,889, um, um, 5,089 feet, the greatest relief on that side would be towards, uh, the neighbors, my clients. They would be impacted the most because on the left side is about 3,000 and change of the relief that he's requesting. And the other concern that we have is that we have no updated plans. We're concerned about the septic system. Um, we are concerned that, that we don't know if his septic system is going to be so close to where their water well is that it could impact their water well.
Well, and you know that, that's Health Department. That's not something we have jurisdiction of.
Yes, we understand that is the Department of Health. Um, and I just wanted to just reiterate that he, um, is referring to this as a single family dwelling and he wants relief. Well, this property, he, um, the owner who had it in 19, I think 96, it was, was Frank Kenner. He had went to the board seeking pyramid relief and he had his neighbor objecting. Her name was Regina. And what happened was he withdrew that application and submitted not a pyramid application, but a rear side relief application. And thirdly, I just want to just reiterate what the board asked for, that we would like to see these updated plans. Everything he's talking about is speculative. We have no evidence, no documentation of what was granted by the board, what was approved by the board. We don't know what the height of the ceilings are. The third floor, uh, as the nice, as the board member pointed out, there's two master bedrooms in the basement. Um, he doesn't even know the quite what the septic system he's even putting in yet. These are just our concerns and we were hoping, you know, that, and you know, that the board would just listen to the concerns because it is going to have an impact on the neighborhood. Um, a lot of. Okay.
Okay. All right. Now I know your clients wanted to say a few words to us.
Yeah. Oh, I moved the computer here. Yes, hi. Uh, my name is Severnick. We are residents, um, of these, in this area since 1988.
Yep. And Chris, you're an adjacent property owner, correct?
Uh, and we're the.
The next door?
The next door, the recent property owner. Yes, we purchased this property in 2017. And, uh, one item, when we purchased a property, we were concerned about development, uh, on a small lot next to us, which is a lot, the proposal you're looking at. And, uh, we were told at this time that there was an application for a pyramid law, but it, for, uh, for an amendment, but it was withdrawn because, uh, it was unlikely to be granted. And that was in, uh, 1996 and that was an important element for us to go ahead and purchase this property. Uh, this house is a, um, is a very nice house. It's, um, uh, yeah, it was designed by Preston Phillips. He converted a very simple beach cottage in a beautiful, more modern beach cottage, uh, with a Japanese style garden. Now I come to, uh, the proposal of the neighbor. Now, uh, one thing, uh, uh, the proposer suggested it that the house was set back behind the house of the neighbors. Uh, and this is not true. And, uh, and just for, uh, just briefly, I want to show you, I did a side by side comparison of, of the two lots and that, that's the way it looks like. So nothing about this house is behind our house. Uh, on the contrary, the house is 80 feet long and it covers the whole, the whole east side of our house at a height of 24, uh, 24 feet. And that is in the front of the house, in the back of the house, where the property slopes down and where they're building the pool. We're looking at a height of probably 30 feet or more. And, uh, we're looking at this monster right from, right from our, right from our bedrooms.
And bathrooms.
And from our bathrooms. And, uh, I have some little visuals here. They're rough just to tell you, this is what it would look like from our yard. Uh, and this is extending to the side where it's not finished. My camera wasn't big enough. This would be the view from our, from our master bedroom window. Uh, this is another view from our master bedroom window. Uh, this is another view from our, from one of our guest rooms. And so basically the whole side of our house will be a monstrous wall with 15 windows. There are 15 windows and three floors and most of its windows are, uh, double windows, triple sized windows. Uh, now, uh, the, uh, the gentleman mentioned that the second floor is much smaller than the other floors. It is not true. If you don't count the decks that are surrounding the second floor, it's 2,000 square feet. So each floor is 2,000 square feet. It's 2,000 square feet on the second floor, 2,000 square feet on the first floor. And the basement, called the basement, is a full blown out luxury accommodation, bedroom, bathrooms, two bathrooms down there. We forgot to mention that the house has eight bathrooms. Um, and, uh, it is just, uh, I'd be beyond, uh, beyond anything that is reasonable. And, uh, and here's another reason. This is not, this is not a one-family dwelling. This is not a one-family house. You could comfortably build a new house on this property with reasonable, uh, with reasonable dimensions. Um, but in this case, it's a house that is built on spec. Um, the developer told us himself, uh, he bought it for $1.6 million. And, uh, he wants to spend another $1.6 million building the house and then he wants, then he wants to sell it for $6 million. Um, I understand that. I have no problem with people running businesses, having profit motives. But this is the wrong house for the wrong property. If he wants to build this kind of a house, $6 million house, he has to build it on another property. Now, something to the neighborhood, our lots are the smallest lots. There are two of these small lots further down the street. Uh, the, the two lots further down the street, the houses are set really back behind each other. They're not really next to each other. It is not like one house looking at an 80-foot, 24, 25-foot wall with, by the way, an equipment tower on top of the second floor. And I don't know yet what kind of equipment is in there. Uh, probably a huge air conditioning eating system, whatever, you know, things that hum and make a lot of sound. Um, and, you know, our house was built in 1954. Um, so we have 10 feet, eight feet, 10 feet, uh, kind of changing, uh, measurements from our lot line. And they'll, and their, their building will start at 9.7 feet from the lot line. So we have a tunnel. This, this is going to look like, you know, the neighborhood in Queens and not a neighborhood here. and not a neighborhood here in the Atterbury area of the Shinny Cock Hills. And, you know, they mentioned that a lot of houses had variances. Now, I want to know, then I go to it and find out which houses have variances because nothing is built like this. Nothing is on top of each other. This is a mix of single family homes, one story and two story. The two stories are mostly in the second row behind us. We are right on the bay. And yes, there is a big house, we had a big fifteen thousand square foot house being built, but it's built on an acre and a half lots. They had the roof, you have the pyramid, everything worked out fine for these guys. But there's nothing like this and we just totally reject, you know, to sit next to this monstrous wall and 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 have no privacy, lose the light because morning light coming up in the east, as we know. We are, I'm done. I can go on and on. Lillian, my wife, last word, Lillian.
Just the last word is that the public water that this developer put in, he only put it into his house and the house next door to us, the sheer house. So I just want to correct that misconception. We have a well and he wants to put his gigantic eight bathroom cesspool right next to our well. So that's for the Health Department, I know. And I just also want to know, I want you to know that we chose this house for its beauty, its privacy, because we want to retire here. I'm from Long Island. I've lived in this neighborhood since nineteen eighty-eight. I know I've watched all the kids grow up here. I want to be here. Our neighbors, we're really good to each other. We take care of each other's privacy. And, you know, sorry, developers coming into our beautiful neighborhood is really heartbreaking. And I have to say, I'm desperate for help here because it's going to really impact our retirement.
Okay, well, and as you may have heard, members of this board have asked the applicant to make significant changes to this application. So we were concerned about this application before we heard your comments and your comments just help us, you know, appreciate what you, what your position is and we appreciate. Okay.
So did we, are we going to be submitting, we were going to submit comments? Is there going to be revised plans? Or should we wait till then?
Well, stay tuned. Okay, we're going to be dealing with that shortly, but this public hearing is going to be kept open. We're going to have another date. That that much I can say. And and we've already requested the revised information. And so, yes, that will be part of it.
Right. Thank you so much. You've been so kind. And thank you. I know everyone's tired. Thank you for listening to us. We really appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Let's see, I see another, another couple of you guys waiting to be heard in connection with this application?
We are, yes.
Okay, very good. Then unless you're attorneys, I just have to swear you in.
Okay, we don't have.
I can swear on all three of you if you want.
Yes, sorry, this is our daughter Clementine. It's close to her bedtime. No.
Okay, just state your names and addresses, please.
At Prudence Charles Clementine Fulford, thirty-nine Ocean View Drive.
In Southampton, one one nine six eight.
Okay, and you all swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
We do.
We do.
Okay, very good. You can give us your comments.
We we just wanted to, you know, obviously to hear a little bit more about what this proposed building was and to to state for the record to this board, our concern. My great grandfather built the house that we are in. And it has been in our family since nineteen fifty-four. He built it when it was just sort of the Cedar Hills development. And so obviously, we know the neighborhood very well, our family and now our younger family. And and I do just want to state that we're very open to development in the sense that we've seen a lot of wonderful renovations happen in the neighborhood on Cedar and Ocean View in the past, you know, ten years and even more recently, and some younger families moving in, which we really love for our two girls. So we're, and we know that we will have to be renovating our house at some point because it is falling apart, because it is from nineteen fifty-four. But so we're not, you know, we're not opposed to that kind of development, but we are really concerned to see this kind of, you know, the variance ask for this, the height of this building, because that will totally block the water views that we have from our second floor. And then also the, just on the street level, the kind of proposed view that seems to us totally obliterate any green plantings and just seem to be pure kind of driveway and car. I'm sorry?
Sorry. Mr. Title's just on the phone.
Oh, okay. So so, you know, we just, in terms of, you know, the neighborhood and just kind of the the general vibe, and we just wanted to to raise our concern there because it just just feels like the plan of the house is one for a totally different piece of property than that property.
Than point two, three acres.
And the house that, you know, has been there for, I think, almost as long as our house. We knew the family that lived there before. So so, yes, I don't know if there's anything else we wanted to to kind of say. We don't have.
Just wanted you to confirm that, confirm that you're an adjacent property owner and where where is your property versus where the?
We live, we're directly across the street.
Okay.
So so literally, our front of our house faces the front of forty. And, you know, our mailboxes are right next to each other. And in fact, that public water that the other neighbors just mentioned was put in, I guess that's how it works in the town, but put in in our front yard. We weren't told. We didn't know that that was happening. No one, the the new developer didn't mention to us that there was town water coming in. So we actually just, there was just a big hole and then, but I understand that that's how it works with town water. But so, yeah. So we're right. So obviously, it's it's very much affecting our house already.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll appreciate your comments. Anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who's be waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Forty Ocean View Drive LLC?
No other hands.
No other hands. Okay. Bruce, I want to give you an opportunity to respond.
Okay. I'd like to go to and share the screen again.
Sure.
Shouldn't Bruce be getting his documents together so we?
Well, he's going to be, but we're going to allow him to respond to the comments of the neighbors right now.
Go to the photos. You have these?
Yes.
There is the house. Board should take notice of the vegetation on either side of the house. That's looking back from the water towards the street. Let's go to the next photo. It's another shot. You can see the house to the right, which would be to the east, which is obviously significantly taller, but suitably screened. Let's go to the next one. From the street side, you can see there's a fence and you can see there's substantial planting, Severnick's to the right of that line. That's the property. When we go to the other side, we'll see that's significantly screened as well. And just so you know, there's also a giant hedge in front of the house. So you're not looking at the front of the house isn't really visible from the street because there's a large hedge there. So I do want to correct that. The other thing too is I will provide in addition to what I've already agreed to provide is we will take the surveys from the adjacent lots and put them together in a composite map. So you can see how this house sits relative to adjacent properties, because I think the information provided you is not accurate. We're going to make that accurate. The board will have more to work with. With that said, I've heard what the board has said. I will relay it to the clients. We will provide you with the requested information, including the ceiling height, number of bedrooms, et cetera, which I may point out is not a zoning consideration. I can assure you that the septic system proposed here is, because it's the upgraded septic system, its loading and its ability to to treat sewage is far superior than any septic system in this neighborhood unless they have put in this particular system. So the notion that the septic system is going to impact, you know, causes a tremendous impact, simply not founded in the design of the septic system. And that's why these septic systems are so encouraged in Suffolk County. So I do want to make those corrections, but having said that, you've asked for some additional information. I will speak with the the client and we'll get back to you. So I, we will hold it open. I suspect I need probably six weeks. I will be away next two weeks. That's why I'm asking for that. And we can reconvene at that point and see where we are.
Okay. Bruce, just one other question. I had asked the amount of pyramid relief, I believe, has been revised. Do you have that revised figure, the amount, current amount of pyramid relief that's being requested?
That chief requested?
No, that that is being requested by the applicant. We have, it was advertised for eight thousand seven hundred eighty-eight cubic feet of pyramid relief. Has that never been changed?
That has not been changed.
That has not been changed. Okay, so we had the same.
No, the board should take notice that existing pyramid relief, just for the tiny houses there, is over a thousand cubic feet also. Please take care. That's in your plans before you, this is all in the plan.
Okay, all right.
But what you're asking for is is a is a measurement in the plans. What you're asking is see if we can reduce it. I will relate that for sure. And then you're also asking for ceiling heights and I don't know why, but bedroom counts seem to be important.
Because that's, well, well, ceiling heights we ask for because sometimes the ceiling height is very high. By reducing the ceiling heights, we reduce the pyramid relief. That's the answer to that.
Right.
Okay.
We have, take notice that we have a overall height of seven feet lower than what's permitted in this town.
That's not what it is, is that the fact that there's pyramid relief, that is such a significant number, that if you take a look at our applications in recent years, you'll find us asking about this when we have pyramid relief of a significant number. When I say significant, usually, you know, five thousand or or more cubic feet. We often ask for ceiling heights and if necessary, we ask for applicants to revise the the plans to reduce ceiling heights, sometimes change the design of of the roof and make other modifications, such as making things smaller in order to have less pyramid relief. So that's the reason that we're asking about these things because there are not, as far as I can tell, four votes in favor of the application as it stands right now. Please let the applicant understand that. Okay, that's right. Right now, there are not four votes. That's that's what I what I got. So that all having been said, six weeks from now would be, I believe, the first meeting in April, which is April seventh. Okay. Well, that's really, that's like two months from now, or 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 March seventeenth. It's up to you, Bruce. So yeah, six weeks.
April seventh will be better if we're going to make significant plan changes. I'm not sure they made that quickly.
Okay, I I understand.
It's a highly constrained lot with respect to lot width.
I appreciate that. So I understand you've got a lot of work to do. So, okay, all right. In the meantime, any other questions to Bruce?
I just want to make a comment. I I hope, Bruce, that you heard very clearly the neighbors who said having an eight bathroom, five bedroom house doesn't seem the type of house for a one family and a small lot. So you just have that, you have to sort of get that statement and think accordingly and have a conversation with your clients about that. Because that's, that was a very, very, for me, that was a very, very important statement.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to take a motion of hold the hearing open with our turn date of April seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Ms. Todd Hill? Keith, your microphone's off.
I'm mute.
Oh, we hear you. Hi, okay. Mrs. Macedonia?
Hi.
Jirbo Tai, thank you all for your comments this evening. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am for on the agenda is Thomas and Julie Crowley, Southern Canal Street, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map, nine hundred dash two oh seven dash three dash forty point one. Applicant request for leave from the following provisions of the Town Code. One for the proposed lot one, three thirty dash eleven residential district stable. Dimension regulations for a principal minimum side yard setback to six point five feet where fifteen feet is required, two, a principal total side yard setback of twenty-five point eight feet where thirty-five feet is required. Three, three thirty dash eight four D pyramid height for an encroachment in the amount of six hundred and ten cubic feet on the north side of the property. Three thirty dash seventy-six D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And three thirty dash eighty-three C yards to allow an portion of the deck on the south side of the dwelling constructed without the benefit of a building permit to be located within the total side yard with the principal building. And two for the proposed lot two, three thirty dash eighty-four D pyramid height for proposed pyramid total encroachment of three hundred and seventy-eight cubic feet, one hundred and eighty-nine cubic feet on the north and on the south side of the dwelling and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Evening, Kevin. Does that just swear in?
Good evening.
State your name and address.
Kevin Springer, Dynamic Legal, sixty-one Channing Cross, Hampton Bays, New York, one one nine four six.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
I absolutely do.
Okay.
Did you hear me? Yes.
We hear you. It kind of went off for a second.
All right.
Okay, you tell us about the application.
Yeah, I saw that. All right. All right. So I will start with the background of the property. The property is owned by my clients, the Crowleys, who have owned the property since two thousand and sixteen. At the time, it was bought from a family member, so it has been in the family for, I believe, almost forty years now. And the current house on lot one is actually being lived in by one of the, by the daughter and her fiance. The idea is to construct, to subdivide the property, which is obviously very much the norm for this. If anybody has seen the overview, the entire street of Canal Street and on the opposite side, which is the west side, is Newtown Road, that they are all basically R fifteen non-conforming lots. So it's basically the whole neighborhood is developed on very small lots. Ours would be no different than any others. The idea to build a house for the, on the second one is to, for the other child, so that they can continue to live here as they work here as landscapers and real estate. So that's, that's the overview of the project as as we speak, but in drawing the line to 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 make two exact lots, we came upon the lot one dwelling, which has the six point five where fifteen foot is required. Please note that on that dwelling, that it's only in the rear corner, which would be the northwest corner, and it's the way the house is situated as it comes towards the road. It actually juts back out towards the southeast and the off that part is probably twice as much. So it's not that the entire house is six point five off the the property line.
Kevin, you got a survey you can put up, buddy?
I don't, and you know what? I don't, my scanner was not working tonight. I but.
Maybe next time.
I know you guys don't have, I dropped off a bunch of them. We don't have them.
I don't have mine. I'm sorry.
So that's, that's what we have there. In in the process of the proposed house on lot two, we came up with a very small two story, which is roughly thirteen hundred square feet, which is actually smaller than the house on lot one. We did a two story to get as much, obviously, A, to keep in line with the side yard setbacks. Uh, we did a two-story um to get as much, obviously, A, to keep in line with the side yard setbacks for lot number two, but also uh to gain a little bit more space in the house as it is. A two-story would give us a little more than a one-story. Um, the pyramid, obviously, um, and him, thank God, I'm nowhere near the other one. Uh, we're looking at a little over three hundred square feet on both sides and it's, it's equal on both sides because it's in the top as an A-frame to the house. Um, the next on the list is the building permit, the deck, what the deck, which they're mentioning is not actually a deck, it's a um, it's the the steps and the deck, those, that's just a walkway to get to the rear of the deck on the house on lot number one. Um, it's, I wouldn't call it a deck, it's more of a walkway. It's literally only three feet wide. Um, we, the client has no problem legalizing it. We actually didn't even know about it until two weeks ago. Um, what else do we have here? I have heard only from, everybody has received their cards. I have only heard from the neighbor, which is to the west of lot number one, and she had absolutely no issues with it. Um, what else do we have? I I haven't heard from anybody else. And again, basically, as for the neighborhood, it's, it it fits very much in with the neighborhood. Um, I don't, I don't think anybody is gonna have a problem with it. Actually, it's a, it's a very nice design for the house. It's not a big house by any stretch of the imagination. Um, so I don't, I don't know if you have any questions.
I have a question, Kevin. Um, don't you need, don't you need lot area and lot width variances for this?
Uh, when I put it in, I said that, but it's, it is a, you know, it's eleven thousand square feet and an R fifteen zoning.
Yeah, and what, what's your lot width?
My lot width is seventy-five, which is the, it's, that's what the, all the lots are on the street.
Yeah, no, I don't doubt that. I just, I don't understand why we didn't advertise.
One hundred by seventy-five, one, one fifty by seventy-five, pardon me.
Yeah, no, I s- I I I think you, I don't know why we didn't advertise it for lot area and lot width. Have you been to the planning board yet?
Uh, yes, we've done the preliminary, yes.
Okay.
And we are actually in the uh currently in the um Board of Health, but obviously I'm, we're stuck there because it requires a variance. Uh, it will require and will obviously be receiving a uh low nitrogen IA system. That's a ma- it's a mandated area and it's also a new dwelling.
Is it a type two, Anthony? It's not in an egg overlay or anything?
It's a type two action.
Yeah.
Uh, we also had comments from the building department. Uh, Kevin, I'm not sure whether you saw them from Marjorie Riley?
Uh, actually, I got them yesterday and I uh, let's see, what we have here, which um, I I don't know, understand why all of a sudden this came up, but I, and we don't, I will preface with that the client doesn't have a problem with legalizing it, but I was just informed of the sunroom on lot on the house. Uh, but the garage has a CO. The CO goes back to seventy-eight.
Well, you'll have to have a conversation with the building department about that. Okay, so yeah, so they mentioned the sunroom, um, they mentioned uh that the the front sunroom is built without the benefit of the building permit and shall be addressed by the department. The survey should be revised to reference the elevations. And the existing frame garage is currently in an unconforming location where pyramid, with a pyramid encroachment and a rear setback exceeding uh the required setbacks of ten feet, wherever the garage benefits from C of C eight zero zero three five nine dated October twentieth nineteen seventy-eight. So you're right, it has a C of C, uh, but they mention, just mentioned that.
Uh, yes, but you were, I, again, that was, that was news to me. I didn't even know that part until.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that you were going to address whatever issues need to be addressed.
Yes, absolutely. I already spoke to the clients about the sunroom and also uh spoke to them several weeks ago about the the walkway, which is being determined as part of a deck, which I understand because it is raised off the ground a little bit, but it is a three-foot walkway. It's not um, it's not an actual deck. You can't even, you can't even put a chair on it. It just goes from the side door out to the back, to rear deck.
Okay, so the structures that were built without permits, how did that happen?
Um, the previous, well, I believe was their uncle, um, was responsible for, they've only owned this house since two thousand and sixteen. So all, all of this was done prior to that. I did look at aerials for the um, the sunroom and it looks to me like it was some, somewhere in the late eighties to early nineties.
So it's actually the uncle himself or a contractor, or do we know?
Well, we, what, I just, I just told them about this. They're trying to figure out who did, who did it. I can, I can get you an answer, but I don't have an answer tonight.
Well, we're gonna need an answer, I think. Uh, and if it turns out that the, the answer is that there's someone who can by testimony as to how this transpired, with structures going up without permits, we're gonna need to hear from someone. Uh, at least, um, that's just from me.
I think we've been down that road before.
Now, this probably, Kevin, without a survey or an overhead or anything, this is down by the canal, right?
Yeah, if you go down, if you go down and you make the right.
Right.
Because you can't, yeah, well, they now have a, um, you can't even enter from that way. You can only make a right onto Canal Street. It's the, it's, it's a dirt road, actually. It's not even a real.
Right, the town, and the town has a facility over to, I'll say, the north, northwest. You know what I mean? That's where the TP used to be and all that. Canal is right there, everything. Crowley family's been around a long time.
Yes, they have, they have, and they, the, and the, the idea is for them to stay around.
Good luck, good luck figuring it out. Who built that?
Yeah, well, that's, that's when I asked them, they're like, how are we supposed to know? I said, well, you gotta ask your uncle.
You just ask, and if they, if they have an answer, we have an answer, and if they don't, they don't. But we, when, when their ass fills, I'm gonna ask.
It's always better to have an answer than to not.
Ab- absolutely, yeah, okay. Um, other than that.
I made, I made them aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, uh, other than that, that, you know, in terms of the, you know, the, the subdivision application, that of course, for the planning board, but looking at the aerial, you know, it appears that what's being proposed is similar to what's, what's in the vicinity. Um, so, you know, for, for what it's worth, uh, that, that is something I want to know. Uh, then as far as the relief goes, you know, for the, you know, the structures and the, uh, you know, the, the uh distance to property lines, this does happen sometimes when we have subdivision applications, where we have an existing structure that's closer than it should be. Um, I understand that there are family members that are, as you indicated in your presentation, that are gonna end up owning both properties. That's now, you know, could be different down the road and six point five feet from a property line is, uh, you know, not, you know, you know, not very much of a distance.
Yeah, well, that, and just to comment on that, that is why I did bring up the fact that it's not the entire house that's six point five feet. It's literally a corner and then it does veer um southeast away from the, the other house, so.
Right.
How, Kevin, do you know how far the distance is at the other corner from?
Well, I did it, I did it by scale and it looks about to be about thirteen feet. I can, I can get an actual measurement from the uh, from the surveyor. I do, just so you know, I do, I noticed that in the notes here from, from Marjorie, that we are using NGVD nineteen eighty-eight datum instead of NAVD, so he's gonna have to change that. And if I have to have him change that, I can get that um, that setback for the front corner.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I mean, other than that, it, it's, you know, to, to me, an application that is uh, um, yeah, in the scheme of things, a modest application, as compared with the last one.
No comment. I don't want Bruce to be mad at me.
Okay, any other questions, um, members of the board? Katie, you have another question?
Well, yeah, I mean, I just want to know how you want to address that it's not advertised for lot area or lot width.
Okay, um, do we want to re-advertise?
Yes.
Do we, do we need planning board approval first?
Here, I I like to comment on that. Uh, the planning board, the planning board issued a report uh on this one already. Um, and I'll put it in the record if you don't have it. Um, overall, the planning board doesn't have any uh, any issues with uh, this, the relief being requested for the subdivision. Uh, the lot actually was two lots at one point. Uh, this, this, this property existed as two separate lots and merged. Um, you know, it's at some point, um, so there's no objection to that. Um, and uh, and any of the planning issues that we had would be addressed during the subdivision application and not with the plan, zoning board. So I'll be sure to get this to the record.
Okay, thank you.
I think it needs to be re-advertised.
Okay, that's two. Keith, what do you think?
Uh, I don't really think it's necessary in this particular case. All cases have their merits, you know?
Yeah, and we don't know exactly what the members are either, to the extent of the, of relief that they need. Um, Cornelius, where, where are you on this?
I agree with it, Tom Hill. I, I don't, I don't know that we uh need to re-add.
Okay, all right. Um, Bob, I'm not sure if you want to uh, uh, give your thoughts on this?
Um, not at this time. I'll rely on Mr. Grossman.
Okay, all right, so it sounds like we're gonna deal with this under any other relief necessary. Um, um, so, you know, I think that, that's what we're gonna, gonna do because we don't have four uh that are um wanting to go um to re-advertise. Um, all right, so um.
But even under the relief necessary, won't we have to know some?
It's, it is, I mean, listen, it is, it is in um Kevin's application. I mean, we, we know it's, you know, a lot, a lot area is eleven thousand where fifteen thousand is required. We know the lot width is seventy-five where a hundred is required, so um that's on the survey, that's in his application. I just um.
It just wasn't advertised.
Wasn't advertised.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right. Um, any other questions, uh, members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening on Zoom in connection with the application of Crowley? This is the property located at seven Canal Street in Hampton Bays. If you're waiting to be heard, uh, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
No hands.
All right, seeing we're hearing no one, I will move that we close the public hearing. Leaving it open for written submissions uh till two eighteen with a determination on three three.
Second.
Ms. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonia.
Hi.
Jirbo Tai, thank you for your comments this evening, Kevin. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you all. Good night.
Take care.
All right, item five on the agenda is twelve Red Creek LLC, ten Red Creek Road, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash one seventy-five dash one dash twenty-nine. All right, applicant requests a determination that the subject parcel Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash one seventy-five dash one dash twenty-nine is held in single and separate ownership from all adjacent parcels and thus entitled to the relief pursuant to three thirty dash one fifteen D and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Grossman and members of the board. Uh, this application is a preliminary step uh to a uh proposed uh lot line modification. Uh, the property in uh question, that would be uh number ten, that's lot twenty-nine, is an unimproved lot, uh wooded, and uh it's uh adjacent to the uh, butting the uh lot uh twenty-eight uh and with, uh, which is also owned by the same entity, uh twelve Red Creek LLC. And uh, one of the members uh is also uh the owner of number four Red Creek uh road, and it is his uh uh idea that to modify the lot line at uh and own that property, uh, which would be the new lot number ten, uh, as a buffer to his beautiful home, which is on the other side of the twenty-five uh foot wide dirt road uh depicted on the survey. Uh, and it would have, they're not seeking to uh any building permits and uh it would virtually have no uh change uh to the uh character of uh the neighborhood. Uh, wouldn't be a detriment to the health, safety, welfare, or anything else.
Okay, well, um, and thank you, Brian. Um, so this application is an application that is a determination. Um, and when we have applications that are a determination as the single separate, uh, uh, status of two adjacent properties or more, um, rather than it being the area variance standard, it is a, a, a series of legal standards uh from case law that we have to follow up. Um, and so I might ask. I'm sorry.
Mortgages, separate tax bills.
That's correct, so, yeah, so, so, uh, no, I took a look at the deed and the deed apparently is, you know, both lots are on a single deed with a single description. Okay, um, so we don't have several deeds, but it appears that, that we have separate tax records that have been uh continued. Is that correct?
That is correct, and uh the tax bills went to separate addresses that, as you might see uh from the uh, from the abstract, uh, the assessment role and levy, levy module.
Okay, um.
See, they went to separate, separate addresses.
Okay, and then, and in lot twenty-nine, that the subject property is vacant lot, um, it does, uh, do you want to make sure that there aren't any uh structures on that, on that lot? I mean, you indicated it's vacant, but I just want to confirm that.
There are no uh structures on that lot.
Okay, so, so it didn't benefit uh lot twenty-eight or any other adjacent lots?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, all right, and because Keith mentioned, we, we always ask, particularly for a vacant lot, it's not gonna apply, but, but I mean, twenty-nine, you wouldn't have a mortgage because it's vacant land, but did twenty-eight have a mortgage on it, lot twenty-eight?
Is there a mortgage at the client's here? No, there's no mortgage on it.
No, no mortgage, okay. The only reason I asked the question is if there was a mortgage on twenty-eight, um, that didn't reference twenty-nine, that, that would resolve it in and of itself. Um, but instead, we basically just have to make sure that, that there isn't anything in the record that shows an intent to have merged, even though there was common ownership of the two lots for a significant period of time here. Um, I have, I believe, from December nineteen eighty-nine, um, at least according to my, my review um of the, of the abstract, but in any case, i- if there isn't anything that shows an intent to merge, such as, you know, u- using one property to, to benefit uh an adjacent lot, um, such as, uh, you're having, um, yeah, well, uh, any member of, of indicators that, that was an intent to merge. Absent something like that uh in the record, um, there isn't a legal merger.
There, there is not.
Yeah, okay, okay, all right. Um, so that was all I had. We don't have building department comments. Any other, uh, any questions to members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of twelve Red Creek LLC? This is the property located at ten Red Creek Road in Hampton Bays. If you're waiting to be heard on Zoom, uh, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
No hands, okay. If not, Helen, it is yours.
Um, okay, we'll close the public hearing. We'll have written submissions by February eighteenth and uh with a decision on March third.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonia.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Jirbo Tai, thanks so much, Brian, for your presentation. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you, Adam. Have a great one.
Take care. All right, good night.
All right, item six on the agenda is Kim R. Lester, seventeen Allenson Lane, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash three twenty-three dash five dash nine. Applicant request relief from town code three thirty dash thirty-one D. Maximum number of uses to allow a second use, boatyard, dry boat storage. And the subject property where only one use for every forty thousand square feet of lot area is permitted. The subject property currently has a pre-existing one-story dwelling. In addition, applicant request relief from the following provisions of the town code for the dry boat storage, one, three thirty dash thirty-four, business district table of dimensional regulations. One, three thirty dash thirty-four business district table of dimensional regulations for a principal rear yard setback to twenty feet where fifty feet is required. Two, for a principal side yard setback to twenty feet where fifty feet is required. And three, for a principal total side yard setback to seventy feet where a hundred feet is required. And two, three thirty dash one twenty-six boatyard to allow the dry boat storage to be located at a setback of forty-five feet plus or minus where fifty feet is required for any residential district and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Evening, Susanna. Just have to swear again. We can state your name and address.
Susanna Herman and Consultants, thirteen ninety North Sea Road, Southampton.
Okay, and you swear until the whole truth.
I do.
Tell us about the application.
Okay, so the property is seventeen Allenson Lane in Hampton Bay. The property is fifty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-one square feet in a resort waterfront business zone. There's currently a single, very small, pre-nineteen fifty-seven residence on the property. It was actually built in about nineteen hundred, so the house is about a hundred and twenty years old. It was recently raised to comply with FEMA. Otherwise, it's, as far as I can tell, in the same location and size that it was over a hundred years ago. Mr. Lester's family has owned the property for over a hundred years. His great-great-grandfather was Allison, Allison Penny, who is the commander of the Shinnecock Life Saving Station and also the namesake for Allenson Lane and I'm sure Penny Pond and nearby streets as well. They would really like to keep the property in the family, but the taxes, because the property is located on the water, are very high. So they'd like to supplement the income on the property by adding dry boat storage, which would be rented out to members of the community for people just to store their, their boats on the property. So the, can I share my screen?
Sure.
Anything, any reason I can't go and do that? There we go. Let me start with, with some photos. Can you see that?
Yes.
So this is the property here with the orange outline. As you can see, this is resort waterfront business. It's very businessy. You can see there are a lot of marinas, a lot of motels or cottages that also have marinas. You can see there's a lot of dry boat storage. Obviously, this picture is taken in the, in the off-season. So you can see up against the property lines here on this property and down here at this marina, right up to the property line, they are, they're doing dry boat storage there. So this would not be a marina. The proposed boat storage would be located a hundred feet from the wetland line. We've done a hundred-foot offset here. There would not be any maintenance of the boats. They're, they would simply bring them in on trailers at the end of the boating season and take them off overland at the, at the end of the off-season. So it'd be a pretty low, low-impact use of the property to, to store boats here. So both the pre-existing residents and dry boat storage or boatyard are permissible uses within the resort waterfront business district. We need a variance because we are proposing to have two uses on one property, which is more than allowed per forty thousand square feet. So you get one use per forty thousand square feet, we're at fifty-five, so adding the second use requires a variance. There's some dimensional relief needed. When I put together the application, I was considering accessory structure setbacks as opposed to principal structures. So the, the setback relief that Keith went through is actually principal structure setbacks for the RWB zone. I get, if that's the way it is, then we'll need those variances. What we are proposing is fifty feet on the east side. It's a residential property there, but as you can see from the aerial, there's a lot of woods in this area adjacent to where the, the dry boat storage would be. So we're fifty feet away from this property line. There's vegetative screening and a lot of woods here. And this house is set back fairly far from that property line. We're showing a twenty-foot setback from the southerly property line. This property is a motel slash marina property. And we're also proposing twenty feet from the road and there's a requirement that we're fifty feet setback from the residential zoning district line. The zoning district line cuts through the middle of Allenson, Allenson Lane. So that's twenty-five feet and then we're an additional twenty feet there. So we're forty-five feet from the residential zoning district line, not from the residential property, which is another twenty-five feet away. So we need five feet of relief from that zoning district. So. It's within the character of the neighborhood. I have some additional photos I'll just go through. This is, obviously I showed this before, this is the overall district. On either side of the canal, you see a lot of commercial properties, some mixed commercial residential. That's a close-up of the property. That's the existing house, the existing driveway. Looking from Allenson Lane, there's a very dense vegetative screening buffer between the road and the property. This is the northern section along Allenson Lane. This is the, the residential property to the north of the property here, which, as you can see, is very wooded in addition to the screening. That's looking down Allenson to the south. This is the northern property line. This is the residential properties on the other side of that stockade fence. And again, we would be fifty feet from this property line. And that's looking towards the cottages and the marina on the adjacent property to the, the south. There's a little bit of a hedge row there, probably some cedars that have outgrown their screening, but that could be augmented if needed. And this is looking towards the water from the location of the proposed dry boat storage.
That's the house, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And how, how large? You said it was a rather small house. How old?
Let's see. I don't have that right in front of me.
Because when I, when I looked at it yesterday, it didn't look like a small house to me. I, I just didn't even know why you mentioned. Was there a reason, a rationale?
For why I mentioned the size of the house?
To say the size of the house.
Um, just because looking at it as the overall impact of this property on the surrounding area or on neighbors, it's a one-story house relative to the size of the property, you know, compared to a lot of the houses that you see around here that are.
I'm not talking about comparison. I'm talking about that house itself. You know, you brought it up, that it's a.
Okay. Um, I can tell you the square footage if you bear with me for just a moment.
Yeah.
Oh, I've timed out. The mapping function is great. I love it. I live, I spend so much time on it, it's so useful, but then I try to go back to the records and I've timed out. I mean, I could scale it real quick, have a scale.
It's, it sort of goes to the, to the lot area variance requirement, Helen, too, because I think Susanna's saying, you know, typically you need forty thousand square feet per use, and now you have a modest house. You know, not taking up too much square footage.
Yeah, and, and the other thing about this application that is, Bob, particularly for you as, as an EZBA member, this is an interesting application because what you have is you have, it's an RWB zoning. You have a pre-existing non-conforming residence that doesn't conform to zoning, but is there because it's pre-existing non-conforming. And what the applicant is looking to do is to propose a secondary use that is conforming, even though they need relief for being a second use. So i- it's a unusual kind of application. So like, some of the time, you know, you'll have people that will say, well, we want to get rid of non-conformities and make things conforming. What in fact is being proposed here arguably is having part of the lot have a conforming use as opposed to none of the lot having a conforming use.
Well, for the, a pre-existing house is a, is a permitted use.
A pre, well, of course, because it's pre-existing, it's permitted, but, but that's what's unusual. So, you know, and, and the two uses, we don't get applications for, for two uses that often. But, you know, in, in my view, when you take a look at the aerial, you take a look at what's in the vicinity and what's being proposed here, it seems to be fairly consistent with the, the uses of, of surrounding properties. But the, but the one thing that's unusual about it is there would be two uses. And I don't know if there are other lots that also have two uses. There might be, I'm not sure.
Yes, there were, there were. I went up and down the street and there were houses. So I myself have no objection to it.
Hey, Ms. Burgess, to answer your question, I did a quick calculation of the square footage of the house. And again, it's one story and it's less than twelve hundred square feet. It's about, if you look at this, the survey, not the one I submitted, but this other one, previous version, it's about fifty-eight by twenty at the, the largest dimensions. And it's not a complete rectangle, so if you multiply fifty-eight by twenty, you get eleven hundred sixty. So it's, it's less than a twelve hundred square foot house. So I think that's relevant when we're talking about two uses. If I had a, a seven thousand square foot house on this property and then I wanted to add more use to it or more impact, more density, that would, that would be different, and that's why I point out the size of the house.
I, I think the placement of the house i- is very relevant.
Yeah, that.
It leaves room for the business part.
Right, and again, it would be a very low-impact business. They're not trying to run a marina. They really just want to use their property, use the space that they have available in a business district where it's a, an allowed use to use that to store boats. They've had people approach them from the neighborhood and request, hey, can we store our boat at your property? And they want to do it legally, they want to do it the right way. There are other properties on the street that have motel slash marina uses. There's a couple properties I saw that were considered vacant, but that in this, in the aerial photograph are covered with dry boat storage. So it's definitely a use that occurs on the street and across the street or across the canal. So I.
Certainly that could be added to the character of the neighborhood.
That's for sure.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
I understand.
Yeah, and they're, and they're trying to be able to, you know, pay their bills and be able to, to live on that property, and I appreciate that as well.
You got bulldogs right down the street, you know?
Well, it's closed, Keith.
Ah, well.
Ah, too bad, Keith, it's closed.
Suzanne, you indicated you'd, they'd be willing to consider additional vegetative screening?
Yeah, this, this property line, the, the southern property line where the, the cottages are. This is a cottage slash marina. It's fairly sparsely screened there.
Yeah.
You could do a privet hedge or another row of evergreens there.
Okay.
We will.
Yeah, give it some screening in there.
But we also, we also have, this is, this is an unlisted action for SECR, so we also have to coordinate SECR for this. And we'll definitely be hearing from the planning board as well.
Okay.
That's good. Let me just, the, the, the planning board did have a work session on this, right, Susanna?
Yes.
I, I, it's not my project, so I, I apologize, I'm not too familiar with it, but the planning board's going to get a referral. And obviously, the issues that they discussed, I'm sure the work session had to do with screening and buffering and that kind of stuff. So we'll send you some recommendations, and I already spoke to Susanna about it, so she'll come back with something, I'm sure.
Right, and if we get a variance for, for doing the, the dry boat storage, then we would still need to go to the planning board for site plan approval, and they would be looking at all those details.
And your other chart showed twenty-two boats?
Oh, that was a sketch that I did, yeah, just to lay out, you know, what it might look like. This is hypothetical, but yeah, this is, this is a layout. What is it, twenty-two boats that are twenty-two to, twenty-three to twenty-five feet long boats?
Susanna, is it, it's all going to be ground level, right? You're not going to have elevated storage at all.
Correct.
Elevated storage.
No elevators.
That was going to be my question, just one level, right?
Yes, and no structure, no big.
No racks, no racks, okay.
No racks, no covered racks, and the boats would be sitting on their own trailers. So the, the boat owner would take their boat out of the water onto the trailer, drive onto the property and leave it for the winter, and then it would be removed in the next boating season.
Yeah, the spring, right.
The spring.
Okay, just one other question, Susanna, have you heard from any of the neighbors?
I have not.
All right.
And I know Mr. and Mrs. Lester, I believe, were listening in. I don't know if they wanted to say anything as well, but.
Okay, before that, we did have some comments from the building department. Did you have a chance to review them already from Marjorie?
Yes. One of them, well, they were basically about the dimensional setbacks, which we added to the application and were noticed. The other one, survey that I have up now, this hasn't been submitted yet. I just got the surveyor to add the zoning district line, the R twenty line here, and show that offset. So that confirms that we're proposing a forty-five-foot setback there.
Okay. And then they also asked that the location of, of the existing storage container on the north side of the property shall be addressed with the town planning division and building department.
Yes, that's here on the survey. It's a, a temporary storage container. The house is currently rented out and the homeowners have stored some furniture in there. I don't know how the building department will look upon that. But we can, we can address that if needed.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But you're not asking for relief for the storage container at this point?
No, not at this point.
All right, any other questions, members of the board, or Katie, or Anthony? Okay, is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of Lester? This is for property located at seventeen Allenson Lane in Hampton Bay. If you're waiting to be heard on Zoom, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
No hands, okay, all right, so we got to coordinate SECR. So how much time do we need on that, Kate?
Um, I was, I was telling Susanna, you know, it, once she gives us the EAF, we can coordinate SECR and then it's thirty days. So I feel like if we could get the EAF within the next, like, like by March or by February seventeenth.
Yeah.
You know, a couple days before the seventeenth, we could put it on for March seventeenth, otherwise it would go first meeting in April.
It's your EAF by by Monday.
Okay.
Okay.
So then we'll put it back on for um, March seventeenth for lead agency. Um, Anthony, do you think planning would want lead agency? Or do you think, do you have any idea?
You know, I'll ask them. In this case, it wouldn't make a difference. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the environmental review for whichever board. Um, there's only a handful of issues, so I'm comfortable either way. We'll see.
Okay. So I'd say bring, come back on March seventeenth.
Okay, very good. Okay, so I'll make that motion that we're uh, making a motion that we hold the application of Lester open for all purposes until our March seventeenth meeting where we'll have a lead agency determination.
Second.
Mr. Tad Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Curran.
Hi.
Ms. Kelly.
Hi.
Macedonia.
Hi.
Javatai, thank you so much for your comments this evening, Susanna. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Next Friday, Monday agenda is item seven, which is Drew Fine, one sixteen Oliver's Cove Lane in Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map, nine hundred dash one oh two dash three dash fourteen point forty-two. Katie, we have jurisdiction already here, right?
Yep, yep. This is a holdover.
Okay. Good evening, David.
Good evening, board members. David Kiel Martin for the applicant, uh, Drew Fine. Um, the, the actual application does not seem as bad as the advertisement would indicate. This is a um, this was a house that was built in nineteen ninety-five and CO'd with a garage. The area in question um, is the access to the garage. Sometime after my client purchased the property, um, he uh, had the, the blacktop, the asphalt painted as a basketball court. Um, he was doing some uh, other work on the house. The building inspector at the time noticed it um, and said, you need a, you need a building permit for it. Um, I did have several conversations uh, with the prior building inspector Dennis O'Rourke, who ultimately said that the paint on the asphalt created a sports court as opposed to the driveway that accesses the um, garage. If I could share my screen, I can show you.
Sure.
So here, here is the picture, an aerial of what it looks like currently. And this is the aerial that I reviewed um, with Mr. O'Rourke, who has since retired. This is the court in question. Um, and again, it's it's asphalt that's painted over. Um,
We're not seeing it, David?
No, um, let's try it again then. How about now?
Yep. Got it.
So here, here's the, this is a a fairly recent twenty twenty photo. That's the court in question, and that's the painted-over asphalt. What what's great is the context of this picture where the neighbor next door has, you know, white paint on the asphalt, which is not a sports court. Um, so it it's really, in this particular instance, it was the paint uh, that created what I think is an unfair characterization as a structure. Um, and that's the, the assertion that it was built without a permit. The garage was built with a permit again in ninety-five, and this was the area that accessed the garage that got painted over. Um, I have uh, spoken with both this neighbor, who's fully supportive of the application, and then wondered whether he needed to make an application of his own uh, to legalize his court. Um, according at least to the prior building inspector, he didn't need to because he didn't fully paint it over like we did. And then I spoke to the neighbor here to the south um, who who had no objection whatsoever and was a a little irritated that she um, actually had to respond to this. And when she figured out what it was, didn't think it uh, rose to the level of the attention that it seems to be getting. Um, going back to the, the balancing test, the benefit would allow the um, applicant here to have a, a wanted recreational feature. Um, again, you know, we we could legalize this by painting it over black. Um, and then, and then it would be legal. Um, it, it seems to be, seems to me that that's a a useless um, a useless endeavor. Um, the character of the neighborhood, I've given you a sort of a, an aerial that shows the entire neighborhood. You'll see that there are many recreational tennis courts. This is a much smaller uh, amenity that uh, Mr. Fine is looking for. And I would say that the neighbors, neighborhood is characterized with a lot of um, with a lot of recreational structures. Um, again, there's gonna be no detriment as the two neighbors um, who did call me um, have asserted. Um, you know, the benefit, the benefit of having a functional half-court basketball court um, can only be achieved by having the paint on the court. Um, the analysis of the substantiality, I think this particular application, it's more about paint, um, which apparently uh, the paint would make a structure. Um, there are no environmental issues as type-two variants, and the New York State DEC has been pretty clear uh, that there's no environmental impact and a um, so
Appears to be pretty well screened, David.
Yeah, it's, it's super screened, um, which, which is one of the
It gets rid of noise, gets rid of a lot of stuff.
Right, right. The neigh- the neighbor on the, uh, that's immediately Jason obviously has his court there.
Yeah, has no
He has no problem, and he's got his court there. So um, and
I'm sorry.
And the neighbor doesn't have a court. He's only got the white lines on it.
Hence my issue. So here we are, um, trying to legalize it such that it is. Um, the, just the other thing, I know you're particularly sensitive to building without a permit. Again, that's why I brought up the ninety-five building permit and CO that permitted the garage and the driveway was a part of that. You don't need to get a permit to paint something. So it it seemed like a kind of a harsh characterization that it was done without a permit. Um, again, it's, it's just, it's painted over asphalt. It's not one of those, you know, true sport courts or you know, some of the surfaces that a tennis court would have, that type of thing.
This is a circumstance where I completely understand why someone would think in a million years that they would need a permit for peed on pavement.
I always, I always read the denial, you know what I mean? But I always read what's there.
Yeah.
Hey, now, I have no problem with this application. Let's get it done.
No, no. Um, just, we had comments from the billing department, uh, um, Rudy, just wanna read them briefly, which you probably already seen. Um, it's from Marjorie Riley, building inspector, although not part of this application, variances are not required for the current location of the outdoor shower attached to the two-car garage and the outdoor barbecue area of, at the rear of the building, which were constructed without the benefit of a building permit. Um, so the variances are not, yeah, variance is not required. However, the legalization of these structures slash buildings shall be addressed with the building department, so.
Yes, that, that, it was the process of legalizing those structures in which the building inspector brought up the sports court.
Yeah.
So building permits are in. I think they're just waiting for this application to be done and then
Okay.
um, we'll be able to fully legalize everything.
Okay. And the only other question I had is whether whether your, your uh, client is okay with uh, agreeing, have a c- a condition to maintain the screening uh, uh, with the, with the neighbor?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, okay. And that's all I had. Um, any other questions? Any questions, members of the board, Katie or Anthony? Is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard this evening on Zoom in connection with the application of Fine? This is for property located at one sixteen Oliver's Cove Lane in Watermill. If you're waiting to be heard, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
Go ahead.
No hands. Okay. Uh, Mike has a lead on this one and he's not here, so I will make a motion that we close uh, this application um, except for written submissions. The deadline for written submissions will be end of business on February eighteenth, and we will have a decision ready at our March third meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tad Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Curran.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonia.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Javatai, thanks so much, Art Rudy. Have a good rest of your night.
Thanks, everyone. You, too. Hope you have a fast meeting.
That is.
Thank you, David. Let's go Giants. All right, item nine on the agenda is Dylan Patel. You have to excuse me as I try to pronounce this stuff. Uh, Sabbath Coward Dog. One forty-seven Edgar Drive, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map, nine hundred dash thirty-one dash one dash three point two. Applicant request for leave.
No, this is a holdover. Holdover.
Thank you. So holdover. Good to go.
Okay. Mark, we just uh, we just need you, uh, need you to unmute yourself. We can't hear you.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening.
So good evening, everybody. Thank you for the great work you're all doing for the town.
Uh, yeah. Mark, did I previously swear you in on this application? Because I, I think I have someone else. Okay. I did not previously swear you in?
Yes.
That, that, do you recall if I previously swore you in?
No, you didn't.
You didn't? Okay. So if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Mark Schiffer, thirty-four Nassau Road, Hampton Bay's, uh, Hampton Bay's.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. You can uh, give us an update.
Okay, so here we are still waiting for the wetlands flagging from the conservation board. So I, we would like to request to uh, to postpone it for, to the next meeting.
Okay. We do have room on the agenda at the next meeting. Um, so I think that should be fine. However, I just, before we do that, um, any uh, uh, questions, members of the board? Okay, uh, is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard in connection with uh, the application of Patel and Dylan uh, Dylan uh, for property located at one forty-seven Edgeview Drive in North Sea? If you're waiting to be heard, uh, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
No hands.
I got a hand. Adam, um, you, you have, right now you have twelve on um, the next meeting.
On the next meeting, you think that's too much?
Um, it may be.
Okay.
Let me just, uh,
Sorry, Mark. Candace is boss.
The applicant that's, you know, to filed the application already a while ago.
I know, I know, but
It's unfortunate that the flagging of the wetlands is taking so long.
Okay.
Um, yeah, Adam, because I'm not, I'm not sure. You might have two holders that might, two, two holdovers. They might have opposition.
Okay.
Um, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, so I mean, I'll leave it up to you.
Put it on there, Adam. We'll take it slow.
Oh, it takes that long?
Yeah, we did, Doug.
Okay.
Everybody, yeah, said that.
Okay.
I'll write it down.
Mark, hopefully you won't ever end up getting uh, having to wait for a long time at the next meeting. We'll see how it goes. Okay, so
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So I'll make a motion uh, that we uh, uh, adjourn for all purposes the application of Patel and and Dylan uh, to our um, February um, seventeenth meeting.
I'll second that.
Mr. Tad Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Curran.
Hi.
Uh, Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly. Cornelius.
Hi. My name is
Just convenient. Uh, Mr. Macedonia.
Hi.
Javatai, thanks so much, Mark. Have a good rest of your night. Take care.
Item ten on the agenda is Stephen Glickman and Ellie Polanski Glickman, nine Cedarfield Lane in West Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map, nine hundred dash three fifty-five dash three dash ten point twelve. It's held over for our January twentieth meeting.
Will it's looking for Steve Caputo?
Anyone here on behalf?
Coming, coming, it's coming.
He's coming, okay.
I'm here. Yes, I'm here.
Okay, we can hear you, but we can't see you. Can you turn on your video?
Let's see, I'm, I'm, there we go.
There we go.
I don't know what happened.
Okay, no, no worries. Um, yeah, Steve, I believe I previously swore you in, so if you could not just uh, uh, give an update as to where we are.
Okay, when we uh, spoke at the last meeting, I needed to get um, updated surveys to you that indicated the um, dimensions of the tennis court, which I did. Uh, the, the dimensions are a hundred and nineteen point five by fifty-four point six. Now, the tennis court as built is smaller than the tennis court as approved under certificate of compliance fifty-nine forty-two from nineteen eighty-nine. So we did build it smaller, so we get credit for that. Unfortunately, as we, we built it in the wrong location. And that's why we now have the rear yard coverage dilemma and the basketball court in the front yard in order to try to make this happen. So our rear yard coverage, we are over by point nine percent. And on our basketball court, we are um, six and a half feet short of the seventy feet required on setback.
Okay. And I recall at the last public hearing, we wanted to have that, you know, what size was, I believe, um, I guess, you know, at the time, um, you know, I think the majority of the board was willing to go, you know, past what we normally limit ourselves to because of the facts and circumstances of how this court uh, was built in the first place. Uh, but I wanna make sure amongst members of the board that we're, that that uh, the board is okay with the actual size remaining the same at one nineteen point five by fifty-five point six.
Well, and particularly since it already has a certificate of compliance.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Well, I would not be okay with this, but it's a pretty unique set of circumstances that the town already gave it a certificate of compliance. So I would not be in favor of having them dig it up. I'm okay with the, the slight increase in the variance of the length of the court because of the unique circumstances here.
Okay. Anybody else?
I concur with Mr. Kelly.
Okay, uh, Susan, how are you on this?
I'm the same.
Okay. Helen?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. Bob, I'm not sure if you have an opinion, but I figured I'd ask. Okay, and I'm okay with it as well. All right. Um, so, uh, but before we finish up, I just wanna uh, well, ask if there are any other questions of members of the board. Uh, is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard uh, this evening in connection with the application of Glickman on Zoom? Uh, this is for property located at nine Cedarfield Lane in West Hampton. If you're waiting to be heard, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
No hands. Okay, if not, Art Cornelius, it is yours.
Uh, we'll close the public hearing, leaving open for written submissions only until close of business February eighteenth with a written decision on March third.
Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Curran.
Hi.
Mr. Tad Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonia.
Hi.
Javatai, thanks so much, uh, for your comments this evening, Steve. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. We are, I think we're gonna be
Okay, I think we're on to decisions?
Yep.
Okay. Well, no one else is ready. I gotta give. Okay. I have a decision in the matter of the application of Wayne Flotland, I'm pronouncing it wrong, I'm sure, for a property located at Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred two seventy-two, one thirty-four point two. two seventy-two, one thirty-four point two. This application is for property located at thirty-eight Bar Pond Road, Schenochuk Hills. Applicant requests variances in connection with a proposed front porch and second-story addition with finished attic. This property is located within the AE nine club cell. This application was advertised for variances for a third story, but the applicant clarified the plans to indicate that such a variance was not required. As such, this application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants the following relief to the applicant. For a proposed front porch, relief from Town Code three thirty-eleven, Residence District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for a front yard setback of twenty-two point two feet, Bar Pond Road, and fifteen point four feet, Bayberry Cove Lane. Two, for a proposed second-story addition with a finished attic and to raise the dwelling to comply with FEMA. Relief from one, Town Code three thirty-eighty-four D pyramid height for a pyramid encroachment in the amount of one thousand three hundred and seventeen cubic feet, four hundred and fifty cubic feet on the west side and eight hundred and sixty-seven cubic feet on the east side. And, uh, two, relief from Town Code three thirty-eleven for a total lot, lot coverage of twenty-one point three percent, where maximum of twenty percent is required. And three, relief from three thirty-one oh three corner clearance for a portion of the proposed addition to be erected within fifty feet of the, from the intersection of Bar Pond Road in Bay, Bayberry Cove Lane. These variances are granted for structures as shown on the following prepared by Michael Blendy, PE Site Plan, dated December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. The Pyramid Sketch and Elevations dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Plan last revised March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And the Cross Section dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Granted the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and premises applicant authority acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including the removal of all fences in the right-of-way or within the corner clearance prior to the issuance of any certificates of occupancy or compliance.
Second.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
This is Todd Hill.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonia. You can abstain if you're not, if you haven't.
I'll abstain.
Okay, all right. Chair will talk. Next, I have this decision on the matter of the application Edward Burke Jr. and Patricia Burke for property located at Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred five two seventeen. This application is for property located in fifty-seven Hampton Road, New York. Applicants request variances in connection with a proposed two-story dwelling and second floor addition to an existing garage. This application was reopened and revised and modified several times in order to reduce the pyramid encroachments. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief to the applicant, applicants on the following provisions of the Town Code. One, for a proposed two-story dwelling. One, three thirty-eighty-four D pyramid height for proposed pyramid encroachments in the amount of five thousand five hundred and thirty-four cubic feet. This is, uh, being two thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven cubic feet on the east side and west side. And two, for the proposed second floor addition to the existing garage, Town Code three thirty-eighty-four D for a proposed encroachment in the amount of one thousand eighty-one cubic feet. These variances are granted for structures as shown on the survey prepared by John Borowski, Borowski Land Surveying, uh, last dated, uh, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. The plans and elevations prepared by Anthony Ver, from, I can't pronounce it, Ver, Vermonedos Architect, issued and revised January twenty-third, twenty twenty-two for the garage and last dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one dwelling. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and premises applicant authority acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonia, you want to abstain from this one as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chavo Tai. Uh, last one I have is the decision on the matter of the application of LPD four LLC for property located at Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred two sixty-three, three thirty-three point one. This application is for property located at one thirty-four, Missontalk Highway, Hampton Bay. Applicant requested variance in connection with parking spaces at a proposed laundromat. Applicant worked with the planning board to reduce the size of the building and maximize parking by providing a cross-access easement and a shared parking agreement. The planning board assumed lead agency on this matter and adopted a negative declaration. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief to the applicant from Town Code three thirty-ninety-five Schedule of Off-Street Parking Space Requirements for Non-Residential Uses to allow forty-four parking spaces where sixty-four parking spaces is required for a proposed laundromat, as shown in the site plan, floor plans, and elevations prepared by Lewis Schwartz, PE of Tide Runner Engineering and Design, last revised January eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Granted the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and premises applicant authority acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
This is Todd Hill.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Macedonia, you gonna abstain?
Yes, abstain.
Okay, thank you. Chair votes I, and that's all the decisions I have. Anybody else have decisions? Nope. Okay. Pushing to close, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
I want to thank you. Welcome, Bob, welcome.
Welcome, Bob. I hope you enjoyed your first meeting.